We have to listen to all of the folks who are in these environments. And we have to consider everything that they say as we move on to our next steps. I'm personally concerned that we are slipping away from a culture of na'openo ao, a culture of aloha and of empathy. Because when teachers express that they do not feel cared for as individuals with different needs, but who care deeply for their students, I find it very concerning. As leaders, it is imperative that we remember that the caring relationships we build now will sustain us into the future. And there are much harder times ahead. The opposite is also true. I would also like to give condolences, I'm sure the board will join me in this, to the Dole Ohana, and especially to the sister of the employee who passed away. She's also an employee there. And her testimony, which is very moving, is included in our testimony today. Thank you to all who have testified and sent in written testimony, and to those who will be testifying shortly. Members of the public who signed up to testify, please be logged in to WebEx using the same name you used to sign up for testimony. Board staff will call on you in the order in which you signed up to present oral testimony. Board staff will unmute your mic. Please test your speakers and microphones before your name is called to ensure that they are working. Instructions on how to do so can be found on the board's website. If you're not audible because of technical issues, you will be muted and the next testifier will be called. Testifiers will have a two-minute time limit. Our agenda does state that testifiers have four minutes, but I have the discretion to adjust the testimony time. We have fifty-eight people signed up to testify, so I have set the time for two minutes. I have done this so that we can hear from everybody who signed up. And you don't have to wait too long a time, although this could take a couple of hours. I respectfully ask for your understanding. Please state your name, your organization if applicable, and the agenda item you are testifying on. A chime will sound when you have thirty seconds left, and a second chime when your testimony expires. You will be automatically muted once your allotted time for testimony expires. Okay, go ahead, board staff.
Aloha, testifiers, just reiterating, you have two minutes today. You will hear a bell at thirty seconds informing you or signaling that you should summarize or wrap up your testimony. The three testifiers in order so you may be prepared are Heather Mosell, David Mia Shiro, Susan Piccola Davis. Heather, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mahalo, Heather. Your testimony time begins now.
My name is Heather Mosell. I'm testifying on the opposition of the use of Acelis in Hawaii public schools. Thank you Chairperson Payne and board members for the privilege to testify today. My family opted into the Acelis program through our school, Hickam Elementary, to use with our kindergartner and third grader. On our first day, my son's tutor was alarmed by the physical fitness intro video in his lesson and notified me right away. She also filmed it because she found it so bizarre. I worked closely with my kindergartner the next day. During his first physical fitness lesson, I was immediately concerned that the content did not seem developmentally appropriate. Words like cardiorespiratory and fatigue were being used. He is just beginning to work on letter recognition. He was also bored to death and there was little student engagement on his end, just a few overly simple questions after sitting through videos ranging from three to six minutes. These concerns, however, turned to absolute shock when the term "woman hater" was used in his social studies lesson and the word "groupie" flashed across the screen amid otherwise incoherent closed captioning. At this point, I knew this curriculum would not be acceptable for my children and I took out my camera and filmed the lessons as evidence. I notified Hickam staff at the end of the second day of school that this program was not appropriate for our family. Vice Principal Lane listened intently to my concerns. Within a matter of days, after investigation and deliberation with teachers, Principal Wakamoto had emailed families at the school to let us know that the use of Acelis at Hickam had been terminated. While our family's immediate concerns were fierce, I became involved in starting a petition to have Acelis removed from Hawaii public schools because of glaring problems I witnessed and documented firsthand. I am bewildered at the DOE's continued defense of this program. My hope is that our Board of Education will examine the evidence we have presented and consider removing it from our entire district, as a number of districts across the nation have done. Thank you.
David Mia Shiro, Susan Piccola Davis, Corey Rosen. David, can you hear me?
Aloha, board. Can you hear me?
Yes, David, we can hear you. Your testimony time begins now.
Aloha, board, DOE staff, and listeners. I sincerely hope everyone is staying safe in these scary times. First, on summer school, I sincerely want to urge the BOE and DOE to examine how more disproportionately impacted students could have been reached this summer. According to HEI's great estimates, maybe only twenty percent of the total disproportionately impacted student population actually received services this summer. And then looking deeper at the data, I thought it was quite alarming that just twenty-five percent in math and thirty percent in science made progress academically, given that students are going to be already playing catch-up. That, I think, requires a deeper look at how we can support them this year. Also with attendance, it looks like only seventy-four percent and sixty-seven percent respectively attended, in terms of average attendance for online and blended models. So also a red flag there. Looking ahead to the school year, I sincerely hope we can focus on quality attendance. What that means is that we expect more than just signing into Google Forms. How many hours a day or how many hours a week are students actually speaking with teachers? Human connection is so important these days for our mental health of our Kiki and our communities. We need that time to know that kids are doing okay. And we hope that we can get quality data, disaggregated data, on how students are doing and how they're being contacted by their teachers. Just looking at other school districts that have started to report out, Denver Public Schools reported a staggering gap of, so only ninety-four percent of white students were engaging in online programs versus eighty-five percent students of color. I sincerely hope we can listen to each other and work together. And through transparency, empathy, and a focus on equity, I'm confident we'll get through this moment. Mahalo. Again, stay safe, everybody.
Susan Piccola Davis, Corey Rosen Lee, Osa Tui. Susan, can you hear me?
Aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes, mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. This is Susan Piccola Davis. I'm talking first about one of the board priorities that has to do with vulnerable students and the metrics that indicate that a report cannot be provided until November. Appendix B shows that it is contingent on the statewide parental technology survey. There is only one metric for vulnerable students, and that is the percentage of schools whose vulnerable students are adequately equipped to support distance learning. Well, we need to know what that means. Adequately equipped could mean anything. As for Acelis, you should only have to see one example of offensive, inappropriate contact to pull the program, just one. Respectfully, and I've given this great thought, I highly recommend the board respectfully ask the superintendent to step down, pay the rest of her contract ending in the summer. It's gone on too long and it has to stop now. And I just send this with aloha. Thank you.
Corey Rosen Lee, Osa Tui, Logan Okita. Corey, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board. Hawaii State Association's Board of Directors overwhelmingly voted to support Hawaii's public schools to be in one-hundred percent distance learning mode for all students until at least the beginning of the second semester of this school year. HSA also believes that public school educators should have the option of teleworking. The lack of action and transparency from the DOE has put the lives and health of teachers, staff, and our students in jeopardy. This was clearly evident today when the Department of Education and the Department of Health announced metrics for reopening schools. HSA was never consulted in the creation of these metrics. These metrics are so far off, far outside the norm of what is being done across the entire country that it puts everyone in our community at risk. We have already had eighty-nine cases in our schools and one death. Today, you will hear from teachers who are reading the testimony of their anonymous colleagues so that you may hear the real situation going on our schools, which is happening currently. If the superintendent refuses to take action on these basic issues, it is creating a severe lack of trust. Then it is incumbent upon this Board of Education to assume the responsibility and to take action immediately to rectify the situation. HSA is asking the BOE to schedule a meeting to talk about the metrics, to take action on telework and other items as well. Thank you.
Osa Tui, Logan Okita, Rebecca Hadley Schlosser. Osa, can you hear me?
Aloha, Gina.
Aloha, Osa. Your testimony time begins now.
Aloha, board. Osa Tui McKinley, HI and HSA Vice President. Thank you for allowing us to provide testimony for yet another teleconference whose length is likely to rival that of a telethon. Without any video, however, those listening in to this telecast aren't able to see just how telegenic this board is. In all seriousness, though, during this golden age of telecomputing, it's unfortunate how telework policies and procedures are being carried out hazardly, inconsistently, and unfairly throughout the state. You have read, and you will later hear, how reasonable requests are being routinely denied, how our educators are having to use telepathy to figure out what their administrators want in order to win the telework jackpot. On one campus, telework might be generously granted, while on another next door, telework is withheld like there's no tomorrow. Principals point fingers at their CASs. CASs say it's up to the principals. All the while, the superintendent is out there like a televangelist preaching that telework is very much available. Simultaneously, the governor and the Honolulu mayor are on television telegraphing their desire for employers to provide allowances for workers to telecommute. We've seen that despite knowing the ins and outs on what it takes to remain safe, this virus does not discriminate. Just ask our lieutenant governor, who's having to telephone it into work now. Just ask our colleagues at Dole Middle School, who've lost a beloved member of their Ohana, one who took every precaution she could to remain safe. We are but frail humans in the middle of a global pandemic. We lack the power of telekinesis to keep this scourge at bay by simple willpower. Please be clear and direct with administrators to stop playing games with telework, to stop playing games with people's lives. If not, we're in jeopardy of so many more being forced to teleport themselves right out of this profession. Faftai Tele.
Logan Okita, Rebecca Hadley Schlosser, Mike Landis. Logan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, Logan. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. Aloha, board, chair, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Logan Okita. And in addition to being HSA's Secretary Treasurer, I am a first-grade teacher at Nimitz Elementary School on Oahu. I am testifying on item 6B. Thank you for taking the time today to hear from what will likely be many speakers from many perspectives. Despite the varying opinions, I believe we all have the safety and well-being of Hawaii's Kiki, educators, and entire community at the forefront. It's taken a lot of time and energy, but we've found our groove and are making the best out of distance learning. Despite the routine that my students and I have developed while they are safe at home, I'd like to speak to you today about the unsafe conditions my colleagues and their students throughout the state are experiencing. Many of our special education teachers and their most vulnerable students are physically together in classrooms every day. These students often require one-to-one assistance from other adults, as well as services provided by other professionals. HSA has heard from many of these teachers who have shared that there are days when up to twenty people have been in a classroom because these students are on campus. The conditions that we are subjecting these students to are unsafe. These are often our students who are unable to wear a mask or understand the reason for maintaining physical distancing. They are our most vulnerable, but shouldn't we be doing our best to keep them healthy? Shouldn't we be doing our best to keep them safe? Shouldn't we be doing our best to keep our entire community safe by keeping these students and their teachers safe? You will hear some of their stories later today through testimony provided by their peers throughout the state because these teachers were scared to testify on their own. Thank you.
Rebecca Hadley Schlosser, Mike Landis, Lynn Otaguro. Rebecca, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, Rebecca. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Hadley Schlosser and I'm a special education teacher at Naikipono Elementary School. And I'm also a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, where I serve as the Libor Chapter Secretary. I am reading testimony about special education on behalf of a fellow HSA member who wishes to remain anonymous. I am a special education teacher and am currently teaching students face-to-face because this is the only option that was directed from people above administration to support the students. Not having the option to telework has been a struggle with me. I am expecting my first child in the spring and although I know it's best to have my students in my classroom, I know that I need to take care of my health and the health of my child. I am also fearful for those in my family who are older and have underlying health conditions. Since we started a little over a month ago, my colleague was exposed to COVID and I was placed on a two-week quarantine, not knowing how this would affect myself, my students, and my family. With no other guidance, I'm going back to work in my classroom. I love teaching, but why do we need to be placed on the front lines without proper education on the virus and no resources to ensure that we will not bring COVID home to our loved ones? Please consider allowing all teachers to telework. This will allow us to solely concentrate on teaching without the fear or risk of catching this virus. Thank you.
Mike Landis, Lynn Otaguro, Victoria Goldman. Mike, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mike. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Aloha, board members. My name is Mike Landis. I'm a teacher at Lahaina Luna High School and the Maui Chapter President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I'm reading testimony about telework on behalf of a fellow HSA member who wishes to remain anonymous. This teacher says, "A person in my household recently tested positive for COVID. The Hawaii State Department of Health recommends that anyone who has been directly exposed to COVID is required to quarantine for at least fourteen days. With that being said, when I shared this with my administrator, I was asked to provide a note from the doctor that advised me and my family to quarantine for fourteen days. To obtain this documentation, added on to my stress of going back and forth with my PCP, explaining to him why I needed to provide a doctor's note when it is already DOH guidelines to quarantine for fourteen days after direct exposure to COVID. I was already stressing about how to adapt to living in my house with someone who is COVID-positive, making sure this person is taken care of without getting myself sick on top of readjusting to working from home. I spoke with some other colleagues from different schools and it was shared with me that we need to provide documentation in order to quarantine for fourteen days after direct exposure. With this knowledge, I feel absolutely uncomfortable physically reporting to work at my school. How many of my coworkers are scared to even get tested because of the social stigma so they don't tell anyone they've been exposed to COVID and just keep showing up to work anyway, putting everyone at risk? I think it is absolutely unfair that we as educators have to jump through all these hoops to be granted to telework. I was given a ten-page packet to complete for teleworking and to know that some of these requests get declined after going through this lengthy process is infuriating. Why are educators forced to come physically to work during a global pandemic? If someone doesn't feel comfortable physically reporting to work for whatever reason and has the capabilities to work from home, they should be allowed to. Thank you for listening to this teacher's story."
Lynn Otaguro, Victoria Goldman, Inga Park Okuna. Lynn, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Lynn. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. I am Lynn Otaguro. I am a retired teacher and former Deputy Attorney General. This morning, we heard that the DOH and DOE have worked on metrics for instruction in the schools. Unfortunately, because they just came out, it is hard to evaluate these metrics. And because what happens to each of our schools is yet to be determined, it is hard to see how the metrics will work in terms of their ultimate effect on health and safety. While the DOH and DOE continue to work on contact tracing for our schools, just last week, we learned that the DOH did not respond in a timely manner to the Dole Middle School case. And even at the press conference, it appeared that the lines of responsibility are not quite clear, so we cannot be certain that there will be follow-up for each case and contact that comes onto our campuses. So while I am happy to hear that work is being done, I have trouble believing that schools are prepared and safe for in-person teaching right now. And the truth is, while we work on these procedures, we have students and staff on campus in face-to-face instruction under the most risky of situations where students' needs are so great that they cannot be socially distancing and where bubbles do not exist. And the testimony to this board shows many of these problems and makes me so sad. To be candid, we are not ready for face-to-face instruction. If we want to put health and safety first, we should not have face-to-face instruction until we have solid processes, until, oh, we should not have face-to-face instruction until we have solid processes in place backed by the resources to ensure that they are implemented. Thank you very much. Please help our communities and our schools.
Victoria Goldman, Inga Park Okuna, Renee Adams. Victoria, can you hear me? Victoria. Final call for Victoria. Inga Park Okuna. Inga, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Inga. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Inga Park Okuna. I'm a school counselor at Kalihuka and I am HSA Honolulu Chapter President. I'm reading testimony about telework on behalf of a fellow HSA member who wishes to remain anonymous. This teacher says, "We've never had our own classrooms at our multi-track school. And with all four tracks on duty, our teams of teachers have been forced to share one classroom between six people. In just our building alone, there are over thirty staff members on at any one time in which we must share limited toilets, one fridge, and one microwave. How is this safe? How is it that most private and public organizations are allowed to telework? But public school teachers must report to campus when we can do the exact same jobs from the safety of our homes. Neither my husband nor I have family in Hawaii. My daughter has been shuffled through at least four different houses since school started because we have no childcare. And even if there was a place I could take her to, can I afford childcare week after week? The last time I put her in childcare was summer break. We had no other choice. And on the last day of summer camp, we were notified she was exposed to another student who was positive with COVID-19. Do we want to chance another exposure at another childcare provider? No. One time, we were supposed to have no childcare and I was forced to bring my child on campus with me so I could work at school and was reprimanded for bringing my child to work. I asked for my options and was told the only thing was to take COVID family leave, which meant I was not allowed to telework. I would need a substitute. If this goes on much longer, I may be forced to quit teaching because I have no other choice but to stay home with my child. Please, teaching remotely has been stressful enough, but no teacher should need to worry about childcare for his or her child. Thank you for listening to this teacher's story."
Renee Adams, Danielle Keenan, Angelina Kinney. Renee, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Renee. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Just gonna have to switch screens. Aloha mai kako, Renee Adams, kotuinoa, hekumuva, ma'asamia kalama, samia inoka kalama intermediate, ma'akupuniyo piilani. I am being forced to quit teaching after over forty years in the classroom. I have been working from, I've been working since March, but since school started, I have been working and I have had to use my sick leave in order to work. I have been approved for telework September 3rd and however, I have to be, I have to hire a sub every time I have a vulnerable student coming physically to class. At this point, I need to hire a sub five days a week in order for me to do my job. I'm being forced to quit teaching. I have testified at every board meeting except the last one, too busy teaching. I want, I, I want to ask you, you know, if I could be there in person, I would stand and face the wall and talk to the wall. On July 23rd, I said, "Otherwise, I hold each of you who approves this MOE personally responsible for anyone in our school communities who is harmed by going back before it is safe because you have the power to speak." On July 30th, I said, "You hold the lives of all in the school communities and larger communities in your hands. You are responsible for anyone who is harmed by going back before it is safe because it is presentable, preventable, sorry." Dana Inoue, Go to Media School, forty-nine years old. Tried to stay safe, leaves three daughters. Say her name. Say her name. You are responsible. If she wasn't forced to work in this pandemic, she would be alive. Dana Inoue, say her name.
Danielle Keenan, Angelina Kinney, Zachary Morris. Danielle, can you hear me? Danielle. Final call for Danielle. Angelina Kinney. Angelina, can you hear me? Angelina. Final call for Angelina. Zachary Morris. Zachary Morris, can you hear me? Final call for Zachary Morris. Sheri Nakamura, Alyssa Decollari, Angie Choi. Sheri, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mahalo, Sheri.
Yes, can you?
Yes, I can. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Aloha, Chair Payne and members of the board. My name is Sheri Nakamura, Director of HEI Coalition. I'm commenting today on discussion items 6A and B. We'd like to start with our comments on item 6B, DOE reopening metrics. We feel that DOE's proposed metrics for the reopening do not provide an accurate picture of where the needs are in the system. For example, one of the proposed indicators for access to connectivity and devices is percent of students indicating that they have devices at home to engage in remote learning. This is only one variable in the big picture of solving the problem of one-hundred percent devices for all. We suggest instead shifting to a gap perspective. For example, if our goal is to have one-hundred percent of our students with devices and we are currently at eighty percent, then our device gap is twenty percent. We can monitor this metric over time and focus on getting the number to zero. We should also know where the gap is, in what complexes, schools, and populations. This gap metric can be applied to other items like internet connectivity, food, and transportation as a start. We think it is a useful metric and it is also easy for the public to understand and follow. For Summer School 2020, you can see by our written testimony that we did a comprehensive week-by-week analysis. We concluded that summer school only reached about twenty percent of our estimated disproportionately impacted students at a considerable amount of cost. Roughly twenty-one million, around half the CARES funds, were spent on a total of around eighteen thousand students, of which only about ten thousand were disproportionately impacted. We think that summer, that summer 2021 will be just... We think that summer, that summer 2021 will be just as critical for students. So we urge the DOE to start planning now. They should identify struggling students, track them, and do strategic outreach to their families so that more of these students can attend and benefit summer school next year. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify.
Alyssa Decollati, Angie Choi, Branson Moore. Alyssa, can you hear me? Alyssa. Final call for Alyssa. Angie Choi. Angie, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Hi Angie.
Hi, I can hear, okay.
Yes, mahalo, your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Angie Choi. I'm a school counselor at Doh Middle School. I'm also the sister of Dana Inoue, an office clerk at Doh Middle School who passed away from COVID-19 last week Wednesday. I would like to speak on behalf of my sister and ask to allow educators, faculty, and staff members to telework for the safety of employees, students, the parents, the community, and just everyone. There is no doubt in my mind that my sister caught COVID from work because of the high level of coronavirus cases in Kalihui community, along with positive cases on campus, including one person who worked with her in the school's main office. My sister told me that a fellow employee came to work sick. And two days later, Friday night, August 28th, my sister started feeling symptoms like body aches and slight fever. After they found out about their sick coworker, Dana and the office staff took the COVID testing that weekend. My sister was concerned that she was feeling sick too and did not get her results within the three to five days as others did. Dana looked at the website daily and finally found out she was positive Friday, September 4th at 6:30 AM when she texts me the news. My sister was very concerned about this pandemic and well prepared with her personal PPE items like wipes, sprays, masks, and shields. She made every effort to clean everything she touched. I can only imagine the worry she had when she received her positive results. The DOH never called to inform her of her cases and they did not perform effective contact tracing to her and her colleagues. I'm not here to place blame on anyone. I am pleading for some changes to be certain there would not be any other COVID deaths on school campus. I ask for telework to be allowed. I ask that if you are sick, stay home. Some people might feel they can't afford to take off. They might think now it's just allergies, but just stay home. And if you know someone went home sick... Thank you for your time.
Branson Moore. Noah Gabriel. Jaden Gabriel. Kai Noah Lopez. Branson, can you hear me? Branson. Final call for Branson Moore. Noah Gabriel. Noah, can you hear me? Final call for Noah Gabriel. Jaden Gabriel, can you hear me? Jaden? Final call for Jaden Gabriel. Kai Noah Lopez. Kai Noah, can you hear me? Final call for Kai Noah Lopez. David Lealofii, Taipu. David, can you hear me? Final call for David Lealofii, Taipu. Amy Clements. Susan Rocco. Jody Beatty. Amy, can you hear me? Amy Clements. Final call for Amy Clements. Susan Rocco. Jody Beatty. Lisa Morrison. Susan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you Susan, your testimony time begins now.
I'm Susan Rocco, I'm staff to the Special Education Advisory Council and we are testifying on item 6E. These comments are made in the spirit of partnership as opportunities to better identify areas that may require additional resources, strategies, or course correction, and to provide greater transparency to public education stakeholders. With, the first item we'd like to look at are the vital sign metrics, the parameters used. In general, the metrics are quite broad and do not provide enough specificity to inform data-driven decision-making. Unlike student death indicators, there are no standards set and no targets for accountability. The current plan is to aggregate data on a state or complex area level. Data, data will have to be collected at the school level however and should be disaggregated down to the school level in order to identify where resources or technical support is needed most. The second item we'd like to talk about are, is high-risk attendance for vulnerable students. Chronic absenteeism has been a significant learning barrier for students with disabilities. We're concerned that there's so much variability in the methodology by which schools are currently recording attendance that this metric may not capture the true incidence of absenteeism for vulnerable students. The Office of Student Support Services has offered attendance guidance that people may use in taking attendance. There should be standardized mandatory methods for attendance-taking. Third item, professional development on access to connectivity. Merely reporting the count of employees who've been completed professional development does nothing to ensure that teachers and related service personnel are engaging in evidence-based distance-learning strategies with fidelity. What would be more helpful to the board in the...
Jody Beatty. Lisa Morrison. Kelly Ka'ana'ana. Jody, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes Jody, mahalo, your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. Aloha, my name is Jody Beatty and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Waimea Nalo Elementary and Intermediate School and the Winward Chapter President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I am reading testimony about telework on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. I understand telework is supposed to be decided on one's ability to do one's job as well or better from home. While I can meet this standard and can offer proof, it is still my understanding I would be doing my career a disservice if I even apply. I don't even believe that is the appropriate standard to use under the current unprecedented circumstances. That is not the standard Governor Ege and Superintendent Kishimoto asked Hawaii's other employers to imply. In their joint press conference of August 7th, they requested flexibility from Hawaii employers regarding distance-learning schedules. In announcing the new stay-at-home, work-from-home order of August 25th, Mayor Caldwell claimed, "If you can work from home, you should." It is too bad telework flexibility is not being widely offered to the very teachers who are bending over backwards, working more hours than ever to create a high-quality distance-learning experience for Hawaii students. Twice now, I have come home to find my fourth grader in tears over a distance-learning issue my mom couldn't help her with, but it would have taken me only a moment to assist. They keep reminding us teachers about self-care and the importance of putting our own oxygen mask on first. Telework, without jumping through hoops or risking my career, would put me at a far better position to help my students academically and emotionally. Mahalo for listening.
Lisa Morrison. Kelly Ka'ana'ana. David Nigard. Aaron Kubo. Lisa, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes Lisa, mahalo, your testimony time begins now.
Thank you, my name is Lisa Morrison and I'm a teacher at Maui Waimea Intermediate School on the island of Maui. I'm also the Maui Chapter Vice President for the Hawaii State Teachers Association and I happen to serve on the negotiations team right now. I'm reading testimony about special education on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. Fully self-contained classroom students, FSC students, social-emotional need students, or English-language learner students and students whose parents indicate limited Wi-Fi access are all on campus. Even with this limited population, it is clearly impossible to enforce social distancing, mask-wearing, and sanitation to DOH-recommended standards. Custodians simply cannot keep up and no new custodians have been hired. FSC students are crammed on special education buses with no social distancing or mask-wearing enforcement. Those classrooms have so many students and adults, it's impossible to socially distance. This is in a room of medically fragile students with the most underlying conditions in a student population. Leadership is fully aware, but nothing is being done because what can be done? If the DOE ignores the DOH to push the agenda of schools reopening. There are all these written guidelines on COVID-19 response and on-campus protocols, but administration has made it clear they are recommendations and not required because there is no way we have the resources to actually do any of it effectively. Special education students are not getting their individual education plans implemented as that is clearly impossible, but the DOE is still mandating that they must be. Thank you for your time and listening to this testimony.
Kelly Ka'ana'ana. David Nigard. Aaron Kubo. Laverne Moore. Kelly, can you hear me? Kelly Ka'ana'ana. Final call for Kelly. David, can you hear me? David? Final call for David. Ikala mai au, going back to Kelly Ka'ana'ana. Kelly, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, thank you, I, I wasn't able to unmute, but I got it now.
Yes, we could see there was a little bit of technical difficulties there, ikala mai au.
Yes.
Your testimony time begins now.
Aloha, my name is Kelly Ka'ana'ana and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Holomoa Elementary in Eva Beach and a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I'm reading testimony about a special education teacher on behalf of a special education teacher who wishes to remain anonymous. On August 17th, we welcomed our students back to school with all participating in virtual instruction except special education students who were deemed vulnerable and unable to participate in online instruction effectively. Although our department met with administration to determine students who would be coming to campus, there were no clear guidance on how we would determine this. We were provided with a definite answer on August 13th that students would be starting school. That meant we only had two days to prep and make sure that our procedures were in order. The sped teachers made up procedures of how students would enter campus, who would check temperatures, how we would clean and sanitize everything daily. There were no guidance from the administration team at all. I have many service providers for my students coming in and out of my room every day with no precautions taken before they even walk on campus. Also, despite conversations to change the caseload so that each teacher is given a different platform to teach to, our caseloads remain the same. Therefore, we have a mixture of in-person students, virtual students, and Acelis-only students to teach. The special education teachers are the only teachers expected to do this on campus. On top of the uneven job duties expected of us, I have been denied the opportunity to bring my son to school with me because I have students in my room during the day. Now I have to pay for childcare out of my own pocket so that my son has a safe place to go during the day. Mahalo for listening.
David Nigard. Aaron Kubo. Laverne Moore. Stephen Bordeaux. David, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes David, mahalo, your testimony time begins now.
Aloha, my name is David Nigard. I am an English-language arts teacher at HP Baldwin High School on Maui and a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I have served on the HSTA Speakers Bureau and Government Relations Committee and I'm currently a site rep at Baldwin. I'm reading the testimony of three fellow HSTA members who wish to remain anonymous on Agenda Item 4B about personal protective equipment needs. The first educator says, "I am appalled that the PPE I received from my school were two travel-sized containers of hand sanitizer, a homemade mask, and a flimsy face shield held together with a rubber band. That's the PPE I received when we were preparing for students to return to school. I feel like I am forced to choose between providing these students with face-to-face instruction in order to maintain an amicable working environment despite the students' lack of compliance with social distancing protocols or protecting my health and the health of my loved ones." The second educator reports, "We are not supplied with adequate cleaning materials to protect ourselves or the kids, disinfect the room appropriately, clean our daily materials, etc. One school day with only ten kids in class requires a minimum of two rolls of paper towels for all the constant hand washing, a full container of soap, and one to two containers of disinfectant wipes, as well as one bottle of sanitizer in order to just maintain normal body and classroom sanitation needs. The school has not provided any of these materials and teachers will be expected to spend even more personal funds in order to protect our students and ourselves safely." And from a third teacher, "Classrooms are not being cleaned except for trash removal at the end of the day and entry-exit doorknobs being sprayed once daily with disinfectant. There are no room cleaners and custodial staff are stretched thin." Mahalo for listening.
Aaron Kubo. Laverne Moore. Stephen Bordeaux. Aaron, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes Aaron, mahalo, your testimony time begins now.
Hello, my name is Aaron Kubo and I'm an eighth-grade social studies teacher at Hilo Intermediate School and a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association where I serve as Hilo Chapter's Vice President. I'm reading testimony about class load concerns on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who asked to remain anonymous. This educator says, "At my school, four teachers are responsible for the education of one-third of the student body, approximately 250 students. These families choose the Acelis option for various reasons and at the onset of this pandemic, we were told to only take attendance. However, because we are educators, who have a duty to our students, we find ourselves analyzing student data and offering program suggestions to the families to supplement their child's education. We have to monitor attendance and consistently track down families who are not utilizing the program at its minimum. We have to field questions about their program Acelis itself. We have to make sure they have all the login information they need to access the school computer, Acelis, Clever, and all the other online programs the school offers. We have to monitor and make sure they've completed their iReady testing. We will have to do report cards for these students using a program that's data does not transfer to the DOE standards-based report card. All the while, the hybrid class sizes are between nine and 15 students. Please address class size inequity when it comes to monitoring fully online students. There are teachers who monitor more than one grade level and over 100 students. At the same time, they're also monitoring 11 children in person in their hub for those that do not have internet. If this distance learning continues, there needs to be language that addresses this workload inequity. I have attempted to set up a meeting with my head faculty rep and administration to no avail. Administration is not responding to the request. Thank you."
Laverne Moore. Steve Bordeaux. Naomi Kalistro. Stephen Winner. Laverne, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes Laverne, mahalo, your testimony time begins now.
My name is Laverne Moore, a special education teacher at McKinney High School and a charter member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I am reading testimony about the unsafe environment on campus submitted by a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. The teacher says, "In my school, teachers are still required to sign in daily through the office, which is often too crowded, people not wearing masks, standing way too close to each other and waiting in line to speak to someone in the office. Staff meetings are not done through web acts or Zoom, but with an in-person audience, despite the resources available to do it safely. Teachers who have requested to attend these meetings virtually have been retaliated against and have had digital teaching tools taken away. As a way to save on custodial hours, my administration has decided to not utilize all classrooms on campus. Instead, four to five teachers are assigned... Instead, 4 to 5 teachers are assigned to teach in one classroom remotely. Telework is not an option at my school and most people do not dare to even request it. Since there are so many of us teaching in one room, we have to wear masks and headphones throughout the day, which makes it even harder for us to communicate with students remotely. In short, schools are a long way from being safe for students to inhabit once again and the careless disregard for health, safety, and care of teachers is the proof of all structure holes that undoubtedly leaves the room unsafe. Please respond safely for our teachers and students. Thank you."
Steve Bordel, Naomi Kalistro, Stephen Winner, Caroline Frudig. Steve, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Steve Bordel. Can you hear me?
Yes, Steve. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to testify today. I am testifying on the reopening of schools. We are simply not ready to have a hybrid program or a system for students coming back on campus. I'm a teacher at James Campbell High School in the FSC classroom, special education teacher. During this time of the reopening, we've had, or at least the distant learning, we've had students on campus. We've had three known cases. One of them was a student. In the event that the student found out, that we found out that the student was positive, the entire classroom was sent home, all the students and adults in the room were sent home to isolate. Yet, that student was also riding the school bus with other students that were in each, every other FSC classroom on campus. What is going to happen when all the students come back, even if it's a hybrid situation? For instance, if one student is a classroom with an average of 15 other students and has four periods, how many classes or how many other students is affected by that one student? We simply would almost have to shut down the entire campus because of one student on campus. Again, we are not, we are not ready for a hybrid situation. I can't understand why is it that we cannot go to the beach, we cannot go to parks, we can't go on a trail. We can only do it solo exercise, but yet we can have students come back on campus. And it still hasn't been a plan yet that we can go back into stores, we can go to shopping malls. We can't go to these venues and yet we're talking about students coming back on campus. We simply, it doesn't seem like people in the DOE simply care. We've already had the DOE briefing today and it seems like this meeting now, this testimony, is simply just for us to vent. I really hope that everyone takes the testimonies to heart and then brings change to protect our staff, our students, and our families.
Naomi Kalistro, Stephen Winner, Caroline Frudig, Micah Prageter. Forgetzer. Ikala Maya'au if I mispronounce your name. Naomi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, Naomi. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
My name is Naomi Kalistro. I am a special education teacher at YK Oina Elementary School and a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I am reading testimony about special education on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. This educator says, "I am an elementary FSC sped teacher currently teaching in a face-to-face arrangement. I service students ranging from grades K to 5 whose needs make it impossible to maintain social distancing throughout the day. Additionally, my students have one-to-one supports who also cannot maintain social distancing. We are doing our best to protect the health of each other and our families. That being said, there are so many factors outside of our control. The DOE health guidance that allows for students to be sent home for signs of illness does not prevent students from returning to school the following day. Currently, only the 24-hour fever-free without medication policy has served to hold a student out for the next day. All other students return to class the following day. I have had students come to school and report that a parent or household member would not be able to pick them up because they have a sore throat and diarrhea. There are no protections for staff and our students when families do not make health and safety decisions that serve the greater good. It is disheartening and disempowering to know that the child who is displaying signs of illness that could possibly be more than allergies will be back the next day. We are attempting to extinguish a brush fire with a watering can." Thank you for listening to this teacher's story. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Stephen Winner, Caroline Frudig, Micah Prageter, Jaden Nativity Dodd. Stephen, can you hear me? Stephen Winner, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mahalo, Stephen. Your testimony time begins now.
Okay, aloha. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. I am testifying for the reopening of the school system. At this time, we have decided to go fully online at a very stressful time for everybody. I understand the dangers, as I think everybody else does. We have asked families to purchase items for schools, quit jobs, made children's and parents take on a stressful situation, asked teachers to do the impossible, do an online, fully online school. And the bottom line is, it is not as effective as face-to-face education. We, as a community, have to figure out how to safely go back to school and send our children back to school. There has to be a safe manner to do this and what we are doing right now is simply not working. That's all I have.
Caroline Frudig, Micah Prageter, Jaden Nativity Dodd, Heather Matthews. Caroline, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Caroline. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Carolyn Frudig and I am a 1st grade teacher at Kalahaila Elementary School on Kauai and a proud member of HSTA, where I serve as the current chapter president for Kauai. I am reading testimony about special education on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. As a sped resource teacher, I have students in person, students that virtually and synchronously join my class, and students who are participating in the Acelis program for 100% distance learning, whose IEPs I still need to address. It is challenging to manage all of the different schedules and services that my students require. I don't feel that I am able to best support any student or group of students because of the different schedules. Special education teachers have been asked to do so many types of paperwork to address the effects of school closures on student learning, contingency plans for the event of school closures, and other purposes. These requests from the DOE outside of the classroom make it difficult to focus on planning for the students. I have a student whose disability causes them to become physical and behavior. Normally, I would not have an issue with this. However, because of the current circumstances, I worry about the health and safety of staff members who come into contact with this student. I kindly ask that you look at the procedures in place and truly understand what teachers are going through right now, particularly since special education students and other vulnerable populations are currently receiving in-person instruction on campus. Please also think about whether it is wise for us to even have in-person instruction where there are not adequate resources and guidance to help keep people safe. Mahalo for listening to that teacher's testimony.
Micah Prageter, Jaden Nativity Dodd, Heather Matthews, Trinise Purdy. Micah, can you hear me? Micah? Aloha, Micah. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Mahalo, Micah. Your testimony time begins now.
Mahalo. My name is Micah Prageter. I'm a high school science teacher at Kalahaila High School on Oahu and I'm personally to show that in Hawaii are not prepared to reopen for students yet and to urge you to postpone allowing students back into our schools until we
Board Chair Payne, it appears we have lost connection from the testifier.
Hello?
Micah?
Yes.
We lost connection with you. Can you please continue? Your time is still on the clock.
So I was recently exposed to someone on campus with the COVID-19 virus and was notified I needed to quarantine. I did so and the school was closed for one day, even though the policy said that schools should be closed for seven days while everything was sanitized and cleaned. And just two days before this, we were planning to have hundreds of students on campus. So you can imagine what might have happened if we were allowing hundreds of students back into school with just one person coming into contact. So, under this situation, it is just not smart and prudent to open our schools to students and teachers for in-person instruction, even on a limited blended learning plan basis. So I urge you to postpone and wait until we can, we have a clear plan for opening our schools. Thank you.
Jaden Nativity Dodd, Heather Matthews, Trinise Purdy, Ashley Henian. Jaden, can you hear me? Jaden Nativity Dodd. Final call for Jaden Nativity Dodd. Heather Matthews. Heather, can you hear me?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Heather. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. I am the parent of three elementary children and am one high school child in the IAA complex of Oahu. I want to speak to the effects on keeping schoolchildren 100% distance learning for an extended period of time. Education is essential. Just like nurses and cashiers, there is essential work, no doubt. We appreciate the teachers and staff and how hard they are working to make distance learning work. Sadly, virtual learning is just not the same. We are expecting elementary children to manage what equates to online college setting without training or maturity to handle it. As a result, children are losing precious time in education. I witnessed in-person or on-screen children lost on assignments, too shy to ask for help, playing video games, or just lying around. I've also witnessed siblings missing class to help younger, to help younger students. The teachers have almost no recourse to correct them and many parents are at a loss how to help. Many parents have multiple students to try to help. Children in kindergarten need constant supervision. Kids with learning struggles need even more help. A parent can only be split so many ways. My children and many others are experiencing emotional struggles due to the isolation they are experiencing through distance learning. The increased strain, this increases the strain on parents as well. Many are missing work or education to keep kids engaged in learning at home. The parents' ability to maintain all of their usual duties has become impossible since the whole school day is now spent supporting students. My husband has personally adjusted his schedule to get up in the middle of the night so that he may be home during the day to support our children. I think we can all agree exhausted healthcare workers is not a good idea. I myself have left my work, I myself have left my work. There must be a safe way to send children back to school. If daycare centers and preschools can do it, I have every confidence DOE highly educated community can do it too. Thank you.
Trinise Purdy, Ashley Henian, Veronica Yosting, Aaron Bucat. Trinise, can you hear me? Trinise? Final call for Trinise Purdy. Ashley Henian. Ashley, can you hear me?
Hi, aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ashley. Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
My name is Ashley Henian. I'm a 5th grade teacher at Kainalo Elementary School. I'm a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, who also serves as a rep for new teachers in the Windward District. I'll be reading a testimony about telework on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. Teachers at my school are not allowed to telecommute for any reason. It is a concern about the health and safety of family, the need to be home for children, or for mild illness. None of these reasons. Our requests that I know of have been denied. This puts people at risk for illness. Teachers will come in because it is easier than trying to do substitute plans in this environment. Not being able to care for children and our sensitive family adds stress that can lead to depression and anxiety. Not being treated like professionals makes us miserable. Morale is very low at my school. On top of not being allowed to telecommute, teachers are not allowed to bring their children to school. The administration's standpoint has been too bad. We must work it out. Regardless of their zero-exception stance, there was a substitute teacher working at our school with a child working at a desk in the classroom. I don't understand how that is appropriate for ourselves but not for a teacher. We were told that if there was a COVID case on campus, the school would shut down for two weeks. I mean, that's what I remember, for cleaning. However, when this did actually happen, my administration made no pass notify staff or plan for remote teaching to ensure safety. In fact, we did not know about the case until we reported it, that had been sent to parents. Teachers have received very short notice of students coming to classrooms. There is no oversight or assistance for teachers who are teaching online while trying to ensure a student in the classroom is following safety procedures. It's not clear if students are receiving safety orientation before entering teacher classroom. Thank you for listening.
Veronica Yosting, Aaron Bucat, Micah Verdadero. Veronica, can you hear me? Veronica? Final call for Veronica. Aaron Bucat. Aaron, can you hear me?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Aaron. I can hear you. Your testimony time begins now.
Hello, I'm Aaron Bucat. I am 11th grade. I'm a junior year. And I am currently enrolled in Campbell High School. What I am testifying is 6B. I think we should stay in distance learning because if you look at the recent lockdowns, there are people that aren't following any of the social distancing rules, which has endangered them into coming in contact with COVID. Not only kids have done this, but adults too. And including this, there are some students who still come onto campus, but even if we minimize this, you still could put risk for family, teachers, students, and et cetera. And I understand that some students are unable to learn from distance learning, but would you rather be safe? Or would you like to learn but have a high risk of contracting COVID? Well, the simple solution is with distance learning, we can avoid all the worst-case scenarios and possibly lower COVID cases each day. That would be all.
Micah Verdadero, Hope McKee, Vicky Cam, Kyla Picardo, TJ Ainu. Micah, can you hear me?
Oh, can you hear me?
Aloha, Michael Cam. Yes, we can hear you. Your testimony time begins now, Micah.
Hi, my name is Michael Verdadero. I'm a junior at James Campbell High School. I believe that we should have some kind of hybrid, in some kind of hy- hybrid schooling because well, for me personally, and I know a few other people too, that cannot be learning through just straight online. And there's some teachers that are using platforms that none of us has even used before and some of them aren't even like explaining how to use it. So as of right now, I am fortunate to not be filling the class, but at the same time, I still have a high chance of doing so. And there's a lot of things that could go into play that we could use, that we could have some people come onto campus, like wellness checks. Before you
Micah, you're breaking up.
But uh, personally, I think that we should have like, I said, some kind of hybrid, so that we can learn, I think.
I think once it opens up again.
Cause with the online, we have people.
How am I gonna do that?
I don't know.
Hope McKee, Vicky Cam.
Um, what are you guys supposed to be doing about that?
Can you hear me?
Can you use the ones I sent you?
Well, I tried to.
Oh, but they don't work, right?
I can hear you. Um, there's, there's background. Nah.
Chair Payne, we'd like to take a recess for a brief moment. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'd like to call a recess. There's some very, um,
Yeah.
bad background noise and we're having trouble hearing some of the testimony, so if staff can work on that, um, we'll come back in five minutes.
Okay, I'm, I'm here, but yeah, there was somebody talking.
To our dear Keiki. Your public school teachers want you to know that distance cannot separate us. We are finding new ways to support you and your families. We're overcoming challenges and learning valuable lessons together. We miss you, and once it's safe, we can't wait to welcome you back. Until then, stay healthy and know that we're here for you, always.
Aloha, I'm Corey Rosenlee, your HSTA president.
I am grateful and so honored to be a part of you.
Mahalo Chair, we are going to go back and revisit Micah Verdadero. Micah Verdadero, Micah, can you hear me?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, Micah, we're gonna try this again.
Alright, um.
Your testimony time begins now.
Alright, so what I was saying earlier was, I believe that we could reopen back schools safely. Because as of right now, well, probably not open schools fully up to all students back on campus, but sort of like a hybrid, like how there was plans of in the beginning of the school year. But probably having some students that are struggling learning all, through online. And, um, yeah, that are struggling through online. Because personally, I'm not doing that well, and many other people I know aren't doing that well. And plus to connections like how we was just going through earlier. Sometimes I can't even attend my classes. And I get marked absent or late, or sometimes I even miss work. And then my teacher, helping other students, has to take their time and help me. Which I personally don't believe should, or they should be able to do that. But, just overall, I believe that students should be able to go back to school with enough time.
Hope McKee, Vicky Cam, Kyla Picardo. Hope, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mahalo, Hope. Your testimony time begins now.
Okay, my name is Hope Pualani McKee and I am a special education teacher, KERU eleven at Kaumakekael Hawaiian Immersion Public Charter School in Ulo. And I'm a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association as the Government Relations Chair for the state. I'm reading testimony about the unsafe environment on campuses on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. Teachers do not feel safe on campus. Students in the learning hub wander around campus freely, and when asked for a log of students on campus, the administration becomes agitated and hostile. EAs from the community-based instruction program have been walking students all over campus without social distancing or wearing PPE, which puts all students, teachers, and staff on campus at risk. My campus has expanded the definition of vulnerable students to include most any student whose parent calls the office to express a struggle with distance learning. We started the year with about eight percent of our student population as full-time on-campus learners. Any student with an IEP 504 plan or EL designation was called and given the option to come to school five days a week. The number of on-campus learners has now grown to twelve percent of our student body. Our students are spending the days in their learning lab pods, however, they are allowed to mix at will before school, during recess, and during lunch. Social distancing is encouraged, but most students do not abide by these rules and security and supervision has not been able to control this. Teachers have witnessed students playfully wrestling, putting their arms around each other to make social media videos and pulling their masks down while social, socializing within six feet. The teachers do not blame the students. These are all natural behaviors for middle schoolers. However, there is not enough supervision to stop it. As much as we are advertising to the community that our school is running a distance learning model, this is simply, is, this simply isn't true. Three to four buses of students arrive on our campus each morning. Our campus is not a
Vicky Cam, Kyla Picardo, TJ Ainu, Connor Storozik. Vicky, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Vicky, Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Vicky Cam and I'm currently a Board of Director for the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I'm reading testimony about personal protective equipment concerns on behalf of two fellow HSTA members who have asked to remain anonymous. The first teacher says, "One small bottle of liquid sanitizer, one small bottle of hand sanitizer, one snack bag of gloves, and a few disposable masks." That is the PPE I was provided at the start of the year without any mention of restocking of any kind. Head maintenance worker then asks about cleaning and disinfecting classrooms, admits that he would love to do so but does not have the manpower to clean and sanitize every classroom between class periods or even after school. The second educator adds, "Classroom cleaners have been reduced to twice a week instead of five times a week. Over one hundred staff members, including custodians, teachers, and support staff, are being forced to use one single stall bathroom per gender. And the bathroom is not cleaned or sanitized throughout the day while the principal has her own private bathroom. Our school claims to have a cleaning schedule that is reported to the principal. I work in a room where other adults come and go throughout the day. In this room, we see a custodian maybe once a day. The last time they entered our room during school hours was three days ago. He came in one door, sprayed solution on a light switch, and walked out. No other surface, including the other door, was sanitized. In addition, our staff members with sinks in their classrooms are being denied soap. Soap is being supplied in bathrooms only. Today, our main bathroom was out of toilet, I'm sorry, paper towels for most of the day. The bathroom the majority of our special needs students use is infested with ants that is crawling all over the sink. How are we supposed to trust that our bathrooms are clean when we have no towels and there are ants trailing all over?"
Kyla Picardo, TJ Ainu, Connor Storozik. Iramaya Lamauta. Kyla, can you hear me? Kyla Picardo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Kyla, yes, I can hear you. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kyla Picardo, a junior from James Campbell High School, and I'm here today to discuss action item six B. As a student, I'm well concerned about my education, but more so concerned about the health of my family, friends, and teachers. Currently, we all know we are under the extension of the stay-at-home order for only the island of Oahu. If this is not a sign to continue with the current distant learning until the end of semester, I don't know what is. It is pretty ignorant to just send students back to in-person because they don't understand why the number of COVID cases is the highest it's been since it's reached Hawaii. I'm a human being too. Of course, I get bored at home. I want to see new people and I wanna go back to school just to see my friends. But why would I wanna risk their lives and their families just to see them? Time is a precious thing that you can't take back. Hasn't quarantine taught you how to cherish the people in your life more than you should? It's just like being a parent. Don't you tell your children, "Don't do something that will harm you"? Say no to sending the children of Oahu back to school during this time that will risk them and their families. They said, "Children don't have noticeable symptoms as the older age do." So why would we want to assume that we are safe? This is of course trial and error. This is a perfect example of letting our guard down too early. And where did that get us? Somewhere we didn't, right? I wanna spend the holidays with my family safely. Don't all of you? We found a solution to learning at home. Let's make decisions when considering how to better online schooling. Teach us how to be responsible, organized, and to work around the obstacles of COVID. I am very thankful for all of the teachers across the island that choose to keep going and make this distant learning experience. In conclusion, please consider the plans for preventing COVID cases within our schools until we are sure of a reasonable, reasonable plan of reopening. I hope we can be safe rather than sorry. Our lives are in your hands. Again, my name is Kyla Picardo and I abide by my testimony. Thank you for this.
TJ Ainu, Connor Storozik, Iramaya Lamauta. TJ, can you hear me? TJ Ainu. Final call for TJ. Connor Storozik. Connor, can you hear me? Connor? Final call for Connor Storozik. Iramaya Lamauta, Ezekiel Imadston, Brooke Nasser. Iramaya, can you hear me? Iramaya? Final call for Iramaya Lamauta. Ezekiel Imadston. Ezekiel, can you hear me? Ezekiel? Final call for Ezekiel. Brooke Nasser, Laverne Moore, Brandon Chau, Robin O'Hara. Brooke, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Brooke, Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
Thank you. Thank you Chair, Board members, and listeners. We've all been listening to a lot of valuable testimony today and I appreciate you listening to mine. My name is Brooke Nasser. I'm a secondary education teacher on Oahu. I am here to address discussion item B on reopening metrics. This topic is even more relevant in response to the announcement that was made earlier today by the governor, the DOH, and the superintendent. An announcement that to every single person I've spoken with, from parents to colleagues, to members of our community, seems utterly baffling. In fact, many people, myself included, thought the numbers were a mistake or a typo. According to the new metrics, we would stay in online learning only if we had over thirty-five new cases per ten thousand residents over a fourteen-day period, which works out to roughly two hundred and fifty cases per day for Oahu. Where did this number come from? Further, according to the metrics, we can go to fully in-person if we have between zero and five cases per ten thousand residents over fourteen days. By these standards, all of the islands except Oahu could have had fully in-person learning for quarter one. Does that mean that doing online learning was the wrong decision? Absolutely not. We have had over seventy cases and one tragic death in the last two weeks with limited students on campus. We shut down the state to bring numbers down. Now, in three weeks, we are going to bring everyone back and open up the state to tourism that doesn't That doesn't make sense. What happened to the "one death is too much" mindset? Did that get tossed out? Our hospitals were nearly overrun when we had 200 cases a day, or 2,800 cases over a 14-day period. I urge you, please don't let this decision be an economic one. Thank you for your time.
Brooke Nasser. Brandon Chaw. Robin O'Hara. Harley Kanehiro. Harley Nakamura. Brooke? Can you hear me? Brooke Nasser. Final call for Brooke Nasser.
I just, I actually just went, but I
Sorry, 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 Brooke. Brandon Chaw.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Brandon. Yes, I can hear you. Your testimony time begins now.
My name is Brandon Chaw. I am a teacher at Pearl City High School and a proud member of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I am reading testimony about special education on behalf of a fellow HSTA member who wishes to remain anonymous. Their comments are as follows. Last year, due to an autoimmune disease, I asked to change teaching assignments out of the fully self-contained special education classroom after my doctor had told me it was not a good environment. But when we returned to the classroom in July, I was shocked to learn that I would be working with students in person on a regular basis, two to three times per week, despite the statewide lockdown. I had a panic attack when I had a room with five students and five adults, including a substitute who kept invading my personal space and a teacher who refused to wear her mask. There was complete confusion over what was expected from our administration. Because I was unable to work remotely, I decided reluctantly that my health and safety would be put at an unnecessary risk if I continued to work in person. I am obese and over 60, and have had respiratory and immune disease. I simply don't feel safe. This is a serious financial hardship for me, and I've had to apply to liquidate my retirement account until I can obtain another job. I will likely have to leave Hawaii and live with my daughter. COVID is to blame, and I know that it's nobody's fault, but if I had been able to simply teach remotely, I would never have been forced to resign five years ahead of schedule. That concludes that anonymous person's testimony. I'd like to take the remaining time and offer my own. I find it completely hypocritical that we are in a statewide lockdown and yet considering reopening for schools. The premise of the metrics is fine, and I agree with it. However, the numbers seem arbitrary and need to be revisited. If schools are going to reopen, I expect the rest of the state to reopen. If anything less than that is offered, I consider it hypocritical on the DOE's part, and I urge Superintendent Kishimoto to reconsider. If not, I expect someone else to go and teach my classroom, because my right to a safe workplace should not be superseded by a child's right to quality education, despite my role as a teacher. I love all of my students, and I enjoy my job, but I am not going to sacrifice my time and my energy for others.
Robin O'Hara. Harley Kanehiro. Harley Nakamura. Robin, can you hear me? Robin O'Hara. Final call for Robin O'Hara. Harley Kanehiro. Harley, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Harley Mahalo. Your testimony time begins now.
My name is Harley Kanehiro, and I am a teacher at James Campbell High School. I am testifying on Action Item 6B. Do you understand how stressful this entire experience has been? We thought we were going back to school under unsafe conditions without proper training, delayed two weeks to get that training that we didn't get prior to that, back and forth between the DOE and the HSTA, literally fighting for our lives, saying we're going to have distance learning for a month, then deciding we're going to have distance learning for a quarter, and then finally coming to the conclusion that we might have blended learning on the day of this BOE meeting. Imagine how this will feel for our Kiki, this back and forth and back and forth. We are just getting used to distance learning. Now, we're going to be possibly thrown for in-person learning and distance learning? These kids need stability when everything in this world right now is unstable, and we can provide this if we continue to stay in distance learning. Sure, you came with metrics to come up with schools? Great, but has the DOE even began to make schools safer? Are there more hand-washing stations, shade coverings, plexiglass barriers, face shields for students, more PPE for office workers and custodians? Why are we reopening schools? What are the metrics to say it's actually safe to reopen? And also, why has it been released at 12:00 PM, an hour and a half prior to the BOE meeting? We can't argue against something that was only made public to us just now while we're all teaching. People also argue that teachers do not have the capacity to get to know their students and build relationships with them, and get to know them socially and emotionally. I just had a dance karaoke party session with my period one for the last three days, and my students call me mom because I call my students my kids. And my students said that my class is the reason that they are choosing to come to school. Don't tell me I don't know how to build relationships with my kids. I have asked the DOE this previously. What can we say to our kids and their family when they catch COVID? What if they catch it in school and give it to their family, or their family gave it to them? How can I be strong for them when I'm breaking down inside, knowing that we're sending them to a slaughterhouse? And we already know how the DOE will respond. They will post another number on their dashboard, not inform the public what school they go to, and will be just treated as another number and not as a human. Thank you.
Our final testifier today, Board Chair, is Harley Nakamura. Harley Nakamura, can you hear me? Harley? Final call for Harley Nakamura. Board Chair, that concludes testimony.
Thank you. Thank you to all the individuals who testified here today and who sent in written testimony. We had over 500 pages of written testimony posted on our website, and I can assure you that board members have been reading through all of them and were taking your voices seriously. I'm going to move through our action items now and then take a break before we get into the discussion items. I think the action items will go fairly quickly, so we'll see. I think the discussion items will not go so quickly. First, we will move to the approval of the July 23, 2020, General Business Meeting Minutes and the July 30 Special Meeting Minutes, August 30 General Business Meeting Minutes, and August 20 Executive Session Meeting Minutes. So there are four separate minutes in your packet. I'm assuming everybody has read them because there's no time to do that now, so if there are no revisions, I would like a motion and a second to approve all four sets of minutes. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I'm looking for a hand. I see Vice Chair Uimura.
Chair, I move to approve all four meeting minutes.
And Board Member Bakarsee. So it's been moved by Vice Chair Uimura and seconded by Board Member Bakarsee. I do have to do a roll call vote here, so is there any further discussion on the minutes? If not, if you approve, say aye. Board Vice Chair?
Aye.
Board Member Asher? Board Member Bakarsee? Board Member Cox?
Aye.
Board Member Fallon? Board Member Fallon? I see you unmuted, Board Member Fallon, but we did not hear you. I can come back to you. Board Member Namau? Okay, Board Member Fallon, I heard you. Board Member Namau?
Aye.
Board Member Tekeno?
Aye.
And Board Member Voss. The minutes have been approved. Thank you. The next item is related to our executive session. On February 6, it was determined, there was a determination by the Board to deny the petition of Sunny Onga. It was Petition Number 20-01, and settlement terms and authority related to Onga versus the Board of Education were the topic of our executive session. The February 6 determination is attached to your meeting packets, and per the administrative rules, the Board cannot take action in executive session and is required to take action in public session. I recommend that the Board authorize our attorney to continue settlement negotiations, including attorney's fees in this case, which is Onga versus Board of Education at All, Civil Number 20-0000576. So I would like a motion and a second to that effect, please. Board Member Bakarsee?
Board Member Bakarsee, so moved.
All right, I need a second. Board Member Uimura? Vice Chair Uimura?
Aye, second the motion.
Okay, so it was moved by Board Member Bakarsee and seconded by Vice Chair Uimura. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? If not, we are going to take a roll call vote. Board Member, Board Vice Person Kenneth Uimura?
Aye.
Board Member Shanti Asher?
Aye.
Board Member Kamana Bakarsee?
Aye.
Board Member Margaret Cox? Board Member Lynn Fallon?
Aye.
Board Member Keely Namau?
Aye.
Board Member Dwight Tekeno?
Aye.
And Board Member Bruce Voss?
Aye.
Motion has been approved. Thank you very much. We are now at Item B, and this is Board Action on the Delegation of Authority for Interim Approvals of School-Community Council Requests for Waivers from Policies, Rules, or Procedures for the 2020-2021 school year. At an earlier meeting on July 23, we approved amendments to Board Policy 500-20 entitled "School-Community Council Waivers." We adopted a new process and procedures for school-community councils to request waivers. The School-Community Council waiver procedures memorializes practices currently in place. It added clarity to the gaps in existing practices and gives the Board a starting point from which it can explore streamlining and improving the school-community council waiver process to provide more flexibility to school communities and be more responsive to their needs. However, as I noted in my memorandum, that I was working on another proposal to grant the needed flexibility for this school year, which could potentially inform long-term changes to the waiver process and better align with school empowerment models. I recommend that the Board delegate authority to the CASs to grant interim approval for waivers from the statute, waivers from board policy, and waivers from department regulations as requested by a school-community council within the CAS's geographic jurisdiction. I also recommend that the Board delegate authority to the School-Community Council Exception Review Committee to grant interim approval for waivers from collective bargaining agreements, provisions, as requested by the School-Community Council. Interim approval means that the school and its school-community council may proceed with their plans as if their waiver requests received final approval. However, waivers with interim approval must still complete the waiver process pursuant to the School-Community Council waiver procedure from the appropriate decision-making authority. Before we start discussing this agenda item, I would again like to remind board members to raise your hand on WebEx and wait for me to call you and mute your microphones when you are finished speaking. But first, may I get a motion to approve this recommendation so that we can discuss it? Board Member Cox?
I move to approve.
Okay, may I have a second, please? Board Member Namau?
I second.
Okay, it was moved by Board Member Cox and seconded by Board Member Namau. Now, is there discussion on this matter? I appreciate your patience, as I have to scroll down looking for, have a long list of people to scroll through. I see a Board Member Namau, your hand is up, followed by Board Member Fallon.
Sorry, I have to take it down.
Okay, Board Member Fallon?
Thank you, Chair Payne. I have just a clarifying question. Based on the memo that you provided and the recommendation made, the interim approval is just specific to collective bargaining provisions. Is that correct?
No. The interim approval is specific to board policy? Let's see, I'm going to go back and read it.
I was looking at the recommendation, to grant interim approval for waivers from CBA provisions.
Yes. The interim approval is for waivers from our policy. It's also from recommendations from let's see, waivers for collective bargaining provisions. Because that's what we can grant approval from. We can grant approval of a waiver from our policies.
So this is a general interim approval?
Yes, from policies, rules, and procedures that come under the purview of the Board. We are not able to grant approval for waivers from collective bargaining, but that could also be streamlined, but it's out of our purview.
I, so I just have a concern around the readiness of the CASs to grant interim approval. And I understand that we would like to empower our schools and the CASs to have an increase in decision-making in their respective roles and responsibilities so that student outcomes improve. We have discussed the tri-level leadership, but what I am unclear about, and so please clarify, is if we grant this interim waiver to the CAS, what criteria and process would they be using to approve the interim waivers? And who developed this? Processing criteria? I know that
Go ahead. I just want to say that there are procedures in place already because the CASs, they're part of the process now. It's just that once they approve it, it then goes up the chain, and there's often just a delay because they come to us a couple times a year. So if schools are needing to make decisions and implement some changes that they've agreed to, it's difficult for them to, they have to wait sometimes quite a while. So the CASs are still part of the process, and there are procedures in place for them to review and to make decisions before they recommend the waiver to go through. We could provide some more specific guidance to the CASs on how to process this in case there might be some questions. We need to, I think, it's reasonable to accept that they are fair and well-versed in the process already. It's just helping to streamline that. And I'm going to, we can get And I, I'm gonna, we can get back to more on that, but I would like to have Kenneth, Vice Chair Uimora, followed by Board Member Maggie Cox also speak.
Are you ready for me, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make statements and then have some questions if you don't mind. And let me know if you wanted to stop me on the question side of it. But just personally, fundamentally, I am opposed to any recommendation that delegates authority from the Board, albeit temporary, and the reason is, you know, the Board has oversight responsibilities over the department and any recommendation that impact those responsibilities should be vetted thoroughly. And I think that's what we're gonna be doing today. Cause strong consideration should also be given to who the authority has been delegated since. They will temporarily be active in a Board capacity. Specifically, the person, in this case, the CASs, should have the requisite capacity to assume the responsibilities. And I think you and Member Fallon touched upon that in the earlier conversation. I thought that's important because if the Board is gonna delegate its authority, we need to know that the authority we're delegating to is able to assume that. So by going through the memo, I wasn't really able to gather sufficient content for me to be satisfied that my two main concerns have been addressed. So I'd like to ask a couple questions, Chair, if you don't mind. And if you can just answer them, I think that'll help me get more comfortable with the recommendation.
Okay, okay.
Is, is the primary purpose of doing this, delegating an authority to allow for expediency?
That's one of the purposes because we, we do understand that things are changing rapidly now and things that they may have planned for in previous years as a waiver may not be appropriate right now, and they may need to rethink those and getting them in place before they bring students back. This would be a more efficient way to do that.
I see. So is, is, my other question was, if there have been any major issues that have been highlighted, that highlighted the need to have the Board delegates authority? And I think what you're saying, coming from the wrong is, because of a COVID pandemic, there were times in need to pivot on certain issues?
That's correct. I think, you know, as you remember, we do look through sometimes hundreds of waiver requests from the schools and we look at those waivers in the context of a normal school year and we approve them. But because things are changing right now very quickly, there may need more expedited requests that schools would like to make some changes and we don't have time to go through that whole process.
I see this. I know, Chair, there's eight steps to the waivers and the first four steps, you know, gets to the CAS level and then the remaining four step then goes to the proper authority, which is the Board. So I'm not really sure how much we're streamlining there or if the Board can meet, because the Board meets once or twice a month. So the question is, why isn't that sufficient to, if you wanted to streamline the process, then instead of waiting for the whole year, we can start looking at these processes at monthly meetings. But that's a question, but-
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
One of the steps that needs to go through in the process is when it goes from the CAS, it then goes into the deputy office that takes a look at waivers and they spend quite a bit of time researching and going through all of those to prepare the approval information for the Board. And that's why it only comes a couple times a year because there is quite, it's quite a labor-intensive effort on their part to put all of that together and to make sure that they are appropriate. So there is that approval process, readiness process that needs to be done. And so that's where things get stopped. And I think if we started looking at them just as they came in, that would probably not be very efficient either. So we need to still work on this process, I think, and I think as perhaps as being suggested here, we need to develop some guidance that would be clear to us and to the CASs what, what would need to be done. If you're more comfortable with that, certainly that could be developed. But truly, the idea is to be more efficient and in a way be responsive to the individual school-community councils that are looking really hard at what they would like to do to address specific needs in their schools. So go ahead, Mr. Uimora, if you have a follow-up to that because I stopped you.
Oh, yeah, no, no problem. And I noticed I was muted again, so I must be rustling papers around, so apologize for that. But yes, I agree, and I think if we can take a look at that because I think when you look at, when you, what you mentioned about the Board Office, it's not for approval, it's just for preparation, correct? And that's where it's taking the time.
It's not the Board Office that does the preparation, it is-
The state office, right?
State office, yes.
Right, right. But they don't have the ability to approve or disapprove the waiver. All they do is process it.
Yes, and they prepare the information for us.
Yeah, because, so in my thinking, you know, that's not a level of review, all they're doing is putting things together for us. So, you know, so, you know, my concern is, you know, what, what level of review are we, we're missing? Because, you know, when we look at this, Chair, it's only temporary, so as you stated in your memo, they still have to come back to get final approval. And if the approval is denied, then they have to go back to where, where it was before the waiver was granted. And so the question, begs the question, is there a possibility of exposure to the Board in the context of liability if a delegated waiver results in harm or from public scrutiny? Is there anything from public scrutiny? So, you know, that's an intangible there, but, you know, that's the kind of things that I would like to see that, you know, we kind of take a look at to make sure we're not, you know, getting exposed to things like that. So what happens if the recommendation is not adopted? Can we streamline it just by maybe saying that we, we go back and say we, we can, we can delegate authority for certain things, but not, you know, uncomfortable with the statute. I'm uncomfortable with the board policy, I guess I could say everything, but those two, you know, and the collective bargaining issues are, it's uncomfortable for me to do that. So if I can get comfort, comfort doing that, you know, I can see us doing it, but right now, I don't have that comfort level. But I may, may, may get there, but, you know, just, just having you say it, and maybe we need to take a look at this to see if we can give more guidance, that's reassuring to me.
Okay, let's hear from some other Board Members. I see, I remember Cox.
Thank you, Chair. Board Member Cox here. First, I have a question. Is that in this process, is two plus two gone?
No, the two plus two would still be part of the process because we, in, at this point, we still would be doing what we do now, is looking at all of those waivers that are collected for us and reviewing them and approving them. But because that takes time and months sometimes pass between the request and because schools put in waivers last year for this year, thinking that things would be more normal, there may be a need to make some different requests now and not have to wait the months that are in our usual timeline.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear that two plus two is still available because-
Yes, there's still-
I'm definitely in favor of this. I sat on two plus two, I've worked on, on these waivers as a principal as well as being on the Board. And when it's, it comes to us twice a year, schools have a difficult time changing some things that need to be changed. And quite often, these waivers are the same ones we see over and over and over, it's the same type. So even though this is a COVID year, there may be, wow, loads of those that are the same thing. It's like, maybe they need an extra waiver day that they didn't plan for because all of a sudden a school is showing that they need some more training for something and they don't have a waiver day invested for it, or any of those kinds of things. So what we're trying to do is help the schools be able to move faster. And it's not just one person, this is the School-Community Council, and then it goes to the CAS in, in our regular process. The CAS understands what the process is, and quite often the CAS may say, no, this, this particular waiver is not appropriate. So, and that happens now, and then it goes on up along the way. So I don't see that this process is going to stop what schools need to do. And yes, I understand about us approving, but when it comes twice a year, and especially in this type of year, and to say, oh, well, let's let it go to the Board really often. I don't think we can have all of those waivers coming in willy-nilly and having them checked out unless the CAS is willing to approve it. So I am again totally in favor of this. I've been asking for several years if we could streamline the process because it's very cumbersome for everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cox. We have Board Member Voss and then Board Member Fallon again.
Thank you, Chair. Board Member Voss, I, I share some of Ken's concerns and I fully support the school-community councils. It's a way in particular for parents and students to have their voice heard at the schools, which is very important this year. But there's a particular sensitivity right now as to instructional days. We just faced a proposed system-wide waiver of nine days, which we deferred. And I don't think under these circumstances, we can delegate authority to the school community, I'm sorry, to the CASs to grant these waivers if we're not gonna be able to review a potential loss of instructional days on a timely basis. So I, I hear everything that Maggie says, I would love to streamline it, but in these circumstances, I'm just not comfortable with this. My suggestion is that, I, I understand that this gets hung up in review at the department level. Why can't it go straight from the CAS recommendation straight to the Board? That's would be my suggestion, Chair. Thank you.
Board Member Fallon?
Thank you, Chair. I, I am concerned about the readiness. You know, I guess being new to the Board, I saw this SCC waiver and based on the language and the scope of what the potential is for being, various things being waived, that it is a key, or could be, a key vehicle for enabling the complex and the schools to have a broader authority around decision-making and then taking action. I understand the need for expediency, but nonetheless, around the readiness issue and around beginning to so-called devolve responsibility, I'm still, based on just my experience over various operational issues, unclear about the roles and responsibilities for the tri-level. Whether it's, and so because this is so broad in its scope and based on some of the experiences around administrative challenges, I, I am very concerned about the need to go through a process that really empowers the waiver. You know, we don't have our metrics in place yet, the strategic plan is still in draft, and once again, the roles and responsibilities issue, you know, whether it's in, in various areas, I won't go into detail, are, are something that are of concern to me. And so that's where I'm at at this point, and that's why I asked the question about the readiness of the CAS. Because the CAS is part of a larger tri-level system and we want it to work and we want to support the move to expediency and enabling, enabling decision-making. You know, it sounds as if the requests for waivers may come in different categories. Some of them are very narrow, at least the examples that were provided, like they need an extra day for training or, and those kinds of things. But the potential for the broader areas are problematic for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Fallon. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this, this issue? Board Member Cox?
Thanks, Chair. Board Member Cox. Maybe if people are concerned about what the two plus two does, if we could figure out a way for the CAS to pass, because the two plus two, that's the unions and the, and the Department and a Board Member that are deciding if it can pass because those are the types of waivers that are changing the contract. And so the unions are very particular about those kinds of things. So perhaps when it goes to the CAS, if it's something on, you know, when they, when you talk about giving some more instruction. So if it's something about that, then it would have to go from the CAS to the two plus two and then back. So there are things that can be done in this process, especially this year when we're trying to move things and help schools figure out how to function through this whole process. That if there's anything we can do to help them do that, then I think we need to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cox. Anyone else? Board Member Fallon? Board Member Fallon, are you, would you like to speak again?
Sorry, I forgot to take my hand off.
Okay, I'm just gonna scroll through here, just. Okay, I don't see any other Board Members wishing to make any comments about this, so if not, let me just check here. Okay, if not, we will, we will take the vote. Checking here, it's a lot to scroll through. Okay, so if you're ready to vote, I'm- Are we ready? Okay, so I, I'm not sure, am I getting, is somebody trying to speak? I'm getting some feedback. Okay, I'm gonna start with the vote, so unmute yourself when you vote and unmute yourself after. And again, the, the recommendation is to allow the CASs to grant interim approval for waivers from statute, board policy, and department regulations as currently specified in, in the policy for waivers. And this would allow the School-Community Council Exception Review Committee to grant interim approval for waivers from the collective bargaining provisions. And that is what Maggie's talking about with the two plus two, so those would not be approved without approval from the reunions. So there, there are some safeguards in here, but it would be interim and it would be really to allow people to move forward during this time when expediency is a concern. And you're correct, we, we have to trust that our CASs are knowledgeable and are already engaged in the process of looking at waivers and determining with the schools whether they are appropriate based on the, the waiver requirements. So with that, I am going to call for the question here and Board Vice Chair Person Uimora?
Chair, you know, I would support deferring the vote on this if we could address some of the concerns and revise recommendation, but if we're not, then I, I vote no.
Okay, I need to check my- Okay, I need to check my... Motion on the floor. Would you like to revise the motion? Or do we have to take a vote on this and then propose a different motion? So, let's see. Are you suggesting a revision? Or, okay, hang on just a minute. I need my... Either way, okay. So, Board Member Uimura, would you like to propose a different motion?
No, I think what I'm trying to do is give you a reason why I'm voting no.
Okay.
And if there is another motion to defer, I would support that. Because then it gives you an opportunity for us to discuss this further, to address some of these, some of our concerns. But we could do it either way. We can take a vote and see where the vote comes, because it may pass. Or if it doesn't pass, if we can consider the other motion.
Okay. I think because we do have a motion on the floor right now. So why don't we see where it goes? And I think one of the things that, one of the things that we may want to make sure is included in, at whatever point we move forward with this, is some clarity and guidance to the CASes for what is expected by the board for the interim proposals. So let's go ahead and take the vote, see where it all happens. I'm getting little notes here that are being sent to me. Okay. Okay, let's just, let's take the vote and see what happens with the vote. And then we can reconsider something else, if that is your pleasure. Okay, Board Vice Chair Uimura? I'm not hearing you.
No, no.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, Board Member Asher?
No.
Okay, Board Member Bakarse? Nay. Board Member Cox? Board Member Fallon?
No.
Board Member Namau?
Aye.
Board Member Tekeno?
Nay.
Board Member Voss?
Nay, and I would support this coming back to be attended next month when we fix it, the problems and discuss.
Okay, I think that we can take that suggestion. And we can move forward with something new at our next meeting that addresses some of the concerns that people had. And I do really want to honor the words of Maggie, who, like me, had some direct experiences with this. And I think we can clean it up and get it back to your satisfaction where you're more comfortable with it. So thank you for all of that. And we will try again on this. But the motion did not, did not pass. So we have one more action item. And this one is in relation to the voting delegate for the National Association of State School Boards. And last year Maggie and Keely and I attended that meeting in Omaha. It seems like a lifetime ago. There's another meeting coming up in October, which we can have up to four of us. I think four to five of us attend. It's all virtual this time of year. So the annual conference will be October 20th to 23. And part of that meeting is for business to be conducted. And one member of the delegation from each state or territory is considered a voting delegate. So we need to select a voting delegate and an alternate. And as of the preparation of this agenda, the only two people who signed up to attend, there's still a little time if you want to, but myself and Board Member Fallon. So I would like to recommend that the board designate me as the voting delegate and Board Member Fallon as the alternate delegate. But before we discuss this, again, we need to have a motion on the floor. So the motion is, as I just said, to approve myself as the delegate with the voting and then Board Member Fallon as the alternate delegate in case I'm not able to attend the meeting and vote. So may I have a motion to that, and then further discussion will follow. I see Board Member Uimura?
Chair, so moved.
And Board Member Tekeno?
I second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Vice Chair Uimura and seconded by Board Member Tekeno that you appoint Board Chair Payne and Board Member Fallon as the voting delegate and alternate voting delegate for the National Association of State School Boards for the meeting in October. So we will now vote on that. And Board Vice Chair Uimura?
Aye.
Board Member Asher?
Aye.
Board Member Bakarse?
Aye.
Board Member Cox?
Aye.
Board Member Fallon?
Aye.
Board Member Namau?
Aye.
Board Member Tekeno?
Aye.
And Board Member Voss?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion has been approved. Before we get into the discussion items, which I believe will be intense, I'd like to take a, we'll take a break until 4:50, a little less than 20 minutes. And then we'll come back. So from, it's 4:32 now. So at 4:50, we will return. 10 minutes to 5:00. We are in recess. Board members, please ensure that your mics are muted.
HSTA has been there for us through thick and thin. And it's really helped us out, especially with negotiating our contract.
They're fighting for us, definitely. You know, fighting for better work conditions and for competitive salary. And also that they're trying to take care of our students.
Aloha. I'm Corey Rosenlee, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. I've been a social studies teacher for more than 20 years. And this is my school, James Campbell High School. So what is HSTA? HSTA is our union. It's made up of over 13,000 members across the state. And I'm proud to say 98% are members of HSTA. HSTA's vision is united in the pursuit of excellence for Hawaii's public schools. Our mission is to support and enhance the professional role of teachers, to advocate for teachers' interests, to collaborate with the community to assure quality public education for Hawaii's youth, to promote human and civil rights, to support and nurture diversity in our multifaceted community. By taking action together, we harness our collective power. When we negotiated our contract in 2017, more than 6,000 teachers marched on the Capitol to demand a fair agreement. Thousands more across the state signed waivers outside their schools. Others signed petitions and delivered testimony to advocate for better learning and working conditions. By working together, members overwhelmingly ratified this four-year contract. It provided for gains such as raises of nearly 14% and improvement in the teacher evaluation system, including shifting to a five-year evaluation cycle for tenured teachers from every other year. A recent midterm settlement provides $45 million for our members in medical benefit coverage and professional development, other improvements beyond the contract. HSTA has negotiated stipends for mentor teachers and convinced the DOE to allow teachers to use their educational administration credits for reclassification, moving them up on the salary scale.
I'm Osatui, Vice President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, former math teacher and now the registrar here at McKinley High School. The HSTA was incorporated in 1971. And since then, we've been a strong voice at the table whenever there are discussions about public education here in Hawaii. We represent not only classroom teachers, but also non-classroom positions such as counselors, librarians, student activities coordinators, registrars like myself and others. It hasn't always been easy. We've had to fight for the voices of educators and students to be heard through rallies, protests, and in the most extreme cases, strikes. Our teachers walked the picket lines in 1973 and 2001. And when our members came together with collective action during those walkouts, they benefited greatly with better contracts, significant raises, and improvements in working conditions. It's hard to believe that only a few decades ago, before HSTA was formed, that teachers didn't get lunch breaks, were forced to clean their own classrooms, and endured open-ended workdays. We have learned through the decades that we are stronger together.
Hi, I'm Logan Okita, HSTA Secretary Treasurer and a first-grade teacher here at Nemets Elementary. Our staff and volunteer leaders across the state work very hard to protect and support our members at every step of their journey. Aspiring educators, along with early-career and second-career educators, benefit from our workshops, training, and networking events. Those dealing with college debt can learn how to decrease or even eliminate their college loans at our free seminars. We also look out for members' financial needs, free financial and retirement planning workshops, as well as travel, retail, and restaurant discounts. Members benefit from exclusive access to insurance plans, including life, accident, critical illness, and long-term care insurance that's as much as 75% cheaper than plans available on the open market. HSTA members are also covered by a free $1 million liability policy that would easily cost $1,000 a year if it could be purchased individually. We offer member-led professional development courses with teachers teaching fellow teachers to improve their practice and helping HSTA members qualify for reclassification and raises worth thousands of dollars. HSTA also offers training and support all the way through the national board certification process, allowing members to improve their practice and earn a $5,000 a year bonus. If they teach at certain designated schools, the annual bonus is $10,000.
Teachers coming into the field, they need to join the union so that they can be a part of that family. You can turn to anybody that you need to and get information that you might not have known before. Being only three years in Hawaii, I have gotten so much from my union family that has helped me to be a better teacher here in Hawaii.
The union has helped me to help our kids. I think that's one of the major parts that the union does, is support our keke and their learning.
So thank you to the more than 13,000 educators that are members of HSTA. We are stronger together. And together, we can give our keke the schools they deserve. Mahalo.
To our dear keiki, your public school teachers want you to know that distance cannot separate us. We are finding new ways to support you and your families. We're overcoming challenges and learning valuable lessons together. We miss you, and once it's safe, we can't wait to welcome you back. Until then, stay healthy and know that we're here for you, always.
Aloha, I'm Corey Rosenlee, your HSTA President.
I am grateful and so honored to be a part of you.
Item number six, which are three discussion items. The first one is an update on the implementation of the board resolution adopted on May 21, 2020, directing the department to offer summer school in a way that supports students in disproportionately impacted by school closure caused by COVID-19 pandemic, to ensure coordination between each level of the tri-level system and to communicate timely and effectively with the public, including the Summer School 2020 Final Report. We did hear some testimony, very specific suggestions as we think to the future on this, from Hawaii Kids Can and from the HEA, APUI for Excellence. So I'm sure that the department has those in mind also. But we will now hear from the superintendent as she provides her presentation. So Superintendent, go right ahead.
Aloha, Board Chair. I am actually going to invite Assistant Superintendent Rodney Luke to walk us through this presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good afternoon, Board Chair Payne, Vice Chair Uimura, and Board members. Again, Rodney Luke, Assistant Superintendent with the Office of Strategy, Innovation, and Performance. Thank you for allowing us to highlight the department's 2020 summer learning opportunities. We submitted earlier a PDF PowerPoint slide deck, which we will be referring to for the highlights. So if you can go on to Slide 2, starting with an overview about the 2020 summer learning. While schools typically lead summer school design efforts, the pandemic created a unique set of circumstances. It allowed for our tri-level organization to continually collaborate and innovate to serve our students and communities. The 2020 summer learning opportunities were designed to provide a comprehensive K-12 approach with a variety of learning opportunities for our students to include the 2020 graduating seniors. Roughly, we serviced over 20,719 students over an eight-week period, and this is well over our previous summer school attendance. If you move on to Slide 3, Slide 3 speaks about the weekly reports and the final data dashboard. The dashboard was created in-house by our data governance and analyst branch and published on Tableau Public. It was designed to be dynamic and engaging. The user is able to hover over items for more details, as well as click on icons to view disaggregated data sets. The website is furnished for you on the bottom of the slide and also on our Hawaii DOE website. The final data published in the dashboard may vary slightly from those included in the weekly, the eight weekly reports that were submitted to the board, because schools and program offices had additional time to reconcile the information. In general, the reports follows the reporting outlined in our summer learning plan. Although not required by the board resolution, some additional subgroup data was furnished, such as the breakdowns for special education, EL, and our disadvantage of students. We also included that within our weekly reports, but did not include that in the final data dashboard. If you move on to Slide 4, actually, Slides 4 and 5 are snapshots that capture both the landing page of the dashboard as well as the dynamic features of the dashboard. So if you look at Slide 4, it shares the state and school-level learning opportunities. The Hawaii DOE offered 17 official summer school sites plus e-school. Here on this slide, Slide 4, it captures the various program opportunities such as credit recovery, which provided students to redo, retake units and credits via a self-paced, adaptive, online program using video-based lessons customized for each learner. We also had our extended school year, which is known as ESY, that provided continued summer school learning for our students with disabilities. We also provided alternative learning program supports and services, which engaged students in their learning by offering programming to continue with their alternative path to success. We also had our Imagine Learning Program for our English learner, English language learners, to assist with their English language development. And finally, on this slide, we share our school-based learning opportunities, which provided students offerings for remediation, intervention, and enrichment. Activities included extended learning, summer bridge, and transition programs. And maybe just to mention a few examples is that we offered kindergarten camps for incoming kindergarteners. We offered elementary to middle school and intermediate transitions, as well as our middle, intermediate, to high school transitions. And to note also that we had several sites, summer school sites, that offered problem-based learning units of study. Moving on to Slide 5, Slide 5 shares and perhaps celebrates our continued state and school-level learning opportunities, focusing on the 2020 CTE Summer Internship Program, which provided 17 recent Hawaii DOE graduates with an authentic work-based learning experience. These interns engaged and were immersed within our state offices as colleagues. They were part of our daily operations, as well as became project managers. We also partnered with the University of Hawaii P-20 Program. This program offered an advising initiative, providing our recent high school graduating seniors with coaching and advising to make informal, critical, next-step decisions toward achieving their post-secondary plans. And then finally, on this slide, we have highlighted the University of Hawaii Community Colleges' Summer On-Ramp Program. This program centered around supporting student transitions with career exploration courses to explore career options and discover the education and training needed to reach their goals. As we move into Slide 6, we highlight here our state operations and support services, noting that our summer feeding program served children 18 years and younger, regardless of being eligible for free or reduced-priced meals with no-cost daily breakfast and lunch. Children did not have to be enrolled at a distribution site, which was located at a school, and did not need to be a public school student. We served over 316,302 meals. Also sharing on this slide is our personal protective equipment, our PPEs, and cleaning supplies that were distributed directly to schools on the neighbor islands, as well as complex area designated drop-off sites on Oahu. We also had our YES Project Mobile Hub that traveled weekly to each district on Oahu, which had a very positive presence in communities of high needs. The bus stops provided students to engage with learning and receive social emotional supports. And then finally, on this slide, we have our Hawaii Keiki Telehealth Program. Our Hawaii DOE students and families were supported with access to a free health hotline, as well as telehealth services. Moving into Slide 7, we continue to capture our state operations and support services. Here, we share our personnel hired to support our 2020 summer learning, also our finances in regards to the 2020 summer learning. Highlighted, we also have our support, the Hawaii DOE Support to Connectivity. We purchased over 10,000 devices and invested in MiFi hotspots. And in addition, we featured our technical assistance support that was readily available through our IT Help Desk, managed by the Office of Information Technology Services for Hawaii DOE employees who needed technical assistance with accessing systems, resetting passwords, amongst other supports. And then moving into Slide 8, as we think about further analysis and internal data use, the department continues to collect, monitor, and analyze data for continuous improvement as a tri-level approach. We have used the 2020 summer learning data to help inform and strengthen our reopening of school year, school year 2021. And we also continue to research and study data across the nation to help ground and calibrate our thinking. And I just want to end on Slide 9 with a few reflections and policy implications. The Hawaii DOE 2020 Summer Learning Data and Stories revealed how many of our schools and offices are already making great strides in addressing the promised themes of our 2030 Promise Plan. And we are also looking forward to utilizing what we have learned over the summer to help modernize, expand, and redesign programs to fully propel our system towards the vision of education, which we all strive for. So with that, thank you again for the opportunity to share and highlight just a little of what was offered this summer, summer 2020. And at this time, we would also like to take some time to recognize and acknowledge the hardworking and dedicated individuals that made the 2020 summer learning programs a success. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Luke. Board members, do you have any comments or questions concerning this? Let's see. Board Member TeKeno.
Thank you. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted. I can hear you.
Thank you, Board Chair. This is Board Member TeKeno. Thank you, Rodney, for providing that presentation. I'm just curious to examine the testimony, especially of HEA, compared to the data that we're being presented. I feel it's very high level, and it doesn't get granular enough for us as board members to understand the outreach and the impact of the, I guess, the objectives for the summer school, where HEA provides, for me as a board member, more detailed information about, you know, how much were, I guess, were students, disproportionately impacted students were reached through the summer school program. It also, you know, pretty much itemizes, you know, the number of students who were reached, who were impacted, how much students would have necessarily required services, as well as expenditures of how the monies were expensed during the summer program. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, why isn't those type of elements contained in the department's reports to the board?
Thank you, Board Member TeKeno. You know, part of the final report was trying to make something dynamic, and prior to that, again, we submitted eight weekly reports that captured the ongoing implementation for that week or the week prior.
This is Dr. Kishimoto. I just want to jump in and add a little more to that, if I may. The report that HEA...
Dr. Kishimoto, could you move your mic a little closer? We're having trouble hearing you. This is Catherine.
I hope this is a little better. Yes?
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's better, yes.
Okay, thank you. So the data that the DOE provided and was captured, that HEA then used to do additional data analysis, is analysis that we certainly welcome and hope that that's why we provide the data. If there are ways in which we can capture and continue to provide analysis in different ways, there were a lot of things that we were trying to capture in a board report. Not only the participation, the change in practice, the potential impact on policy, the fact that there are non-student achievement data that was also important, such as having to stand up a system of a device loaner program and MiFi. So there were a lot of different points that we're capturing in not only standing up a first-of-its-kind summer school program that had to be created in the emergency situation, but the overall context by which it had to be done at multiple levels, and the outreach week by week that schools had to do in order to bring back, capture, make adjustments for safety reasons for the students. So this data has so much deep context to it in terms of looking at the data to also speak about the situational context that surrounds this. And I think it was a matter of the team trying to create a dynamic report where the data is accessible for this continued dialogue and decision-making, but also providing to the board the bigger context under which the data was being... but also providing to the board the bigger context under which the data was being looked at and the week-by-week, almost day-by-day decision-making that schools were engaged in and principals were engaged in in order to capture students into this summer learning process. And so the week-by-week data, Board Member Te Keno, also just want to highlight that the, that week-by-week data, you know, as you saw in my weekly reports, had to footnote that because of the constantly changing circumstances, even week-by-week, day-by-day, we kept questioning in that data that some of that data and the context of the program kept shifting, right? Because of the necessity of the design. And I think we wanted to be very careful with our analysis to be accurate in how we can extrapolate learnings from that with that very ever-changing context to that data. Again, we welcome that external view on the pure data itself. I think that's important, too, as we continue to look at how we're capturing the impact of this COVID crisis and the very dynamic nature in which decisions are made. And data integrity, or not the data integrity, but the ability to compare data points over time is impacted by continuously changing circumstances.
Well, I guess, excuse me, this is Board Member Te Keno. I would really prefer that the reports, if you call it dynamic, gets a little bit more granular and a little bit more informative and transparent to really what was the impact. So if, as you say, HEI took those numbers from the data, if the DOE could provide future reports utilizing the same type of metrics that, you know, is shown in these testimonies, I think it would have a little bit more meaning. While we, as board members, are trying to go through all the documents and prepping ourselves for these meetings, honestly, I would not really interested in looking at this PowerPoint, but was more interested in reading the testimonies that was coming towards the board on what type of data that they were able to analyze. So that's just my final comments, and I yield the floor.
Vice Chair Uimura.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to express my comments as well. And it's really along the lines of Board Member Te Keno's concerns here. And for me, there's really a challenge for me to ascertain the success of the summer school program that was directed on the board resolution adopted on May 21st. Because the data presented did not support the resolution involved the disproportionate impact students and communication. And yes, you know, the PowerPoint presentation is very dynamic, but it doesn't provide the information for us to determine whether you met the resolution that was adopted in May 21st. And that was to, the resolution focused on students that were disproportionately impacted when school closed as a result of COVID-19. Now, the PowerPoint slides that you gave, I'm not sure, because I went back and you can click on, but it doesn't go down enough to tell us if the resolution actually was met. So I would think, in your final report, you would forego your dynamic presentation and just go to the facts. Give us the details. This is what the board resolution requires, and this is the result of the summer school. So when I looked at the presentation, I had a difficult time trying to get the numbers. ID, with the exception of Category Ones, Students Receiving Education Surveys, I couldn't get an indication of the, like, the Category Two students who are juniors and seniors, that need credit recovery, and are at the greatest risk of not having a credit to graduate. What is the total number of students in this category? How many attended summer schools? And how many attain enough credits to do the summer school to graduate? Certainly with Category Three, you know, transition grades, Category Four, students who would substantially benefit. Again, what is the total number? How many attended? How many were successful? And those that fulfilled the great level of requirements? I didn't see that. And that's what I would respect. I didn't need to see a PowerPoint presentation. You can just give me a two-page report and just indicate these things and tell me what the results are. I think that would have satisfied us, because we, as a board, passed the resolution on May 21st. And this is what we expected to see. And even so, I mean, you talk about progress, but you don't define what progress is. And what is your benchmark you're using that positive progress was made? So I guess I can tell you truthfully, I'm disappointed, because I couldn't see the results of summer school. I couldn't see the relationship of the money that we spent on summer school and what impact it had on our students. So so I guess the word is disappointed. I don't have the answer. So if you could answer the questions, Mr. Luke, that would appreciate it. But clearly, the presentation didn't meet up what I expected.
Okay, either Assistant Superintendent Luke or Superintendent, would you like to follow up on that? Or should I look for others to make comments?
Yeah, so this is Superintendent Kishimoto.
Superintendent, maybe I got a suggestion that if you could check your WebEx mic and perhaps move it a little higher, because
I'll try it that way.
Yes, I hear you. You're much better now.
I just removed my mask. I'm in an office with other people, so. Turn the other way as well. So we certainly can go back and frame out the questions from the resolution on May 21st and extrapolate the analysis from the dashboard. So the dashboard still provides the data to the public, but extrapolate whether there's further analysis we can provide by, from that resolution from May 21st to provide further analysis for the board. I think as we are working through the financials and all the final payments for summer school, you know, payroll, et cetera, we can also pull out the cost for items and do a financial analysis, a per-pupil analysis that looks at, that pulls out the investment we made on infrastructure devices, Mi-Fi, that goes well beyond summer school. Take that out from the expenditures and show what those expenditures are programmatically for the number of students served and the number of students, and provide definitions on the number of students who met their learning goals and also define what those learning goals are. The learning goals certainly mean something different at the elementary, middle, and high school level in terms of credit and so forth. But we can certainly look at the questions that provide that analysis off of the dashboard. If the board would like us to come back and provide, and again, if we can do that between board meetings, provide that information.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. I think that would be very helpful. Are there any other board members? I see some more hands up. Sorry. Board Member Bakarsee, followed by Board Member Fallon.
Aloha, Board Member Bakarsee. First of all, mahalo for the presentation. You know, as I looked into it, I started to get a little bit excited. I appreciated the high-level overview and that dynamic nature of it and where it was going. And I anxiously pressed on a bunch of the links, thinking that I'm going to get to the next level of detail where the data that's provided, it's really analyzed, concise, and telling the story. Unfortunately, we didn't get to that. The story came a little clearer after we read testimony, and especially from the coalition. And while they do appreciate that external analysis, I would really have loved to have had an internal departmental analysis to compare it to, would be somewhat of a good checks and balances. One of the areas that I think would really help me is, we heard a lot of the great stuff, and there were a lot of great things that did happen, especially in the context of this whole pandemic and the craziness that ensued. But I think I'm more concerned with what didn't happen, more concerned with the areas, the gap areas. You know, we hear about the percentages that were somewhat successful, but what about the ones that weren't? What about the ones that were not reached? And I think I'd like to also understand the data a little better, especially as an outer-island board member, to understand where are these gaps? You know, is it equally spread, the gaps and successes? Is it equally spread throughout the state? Or is it disproportionate to maybe outer islands and rural areas? I think that would help us understand the situation a lot better. So, you know, thank you, Superintendent, for agreeing to go back and look at it and provide us with more data and context. But also, what I would really love to hear are perhaps, what were the top three learnings that you had from summer school? And how did you take that and apply that to the start of school this year? You know, it's also about looking at what happened and how we can learn from that.
Board Member Bakarsee, we lost you for a minute there. You talked about the top learnings. You're mute. Seems to be back and forth, so.
Am I back?
You're back. So start with the top three learnings.
And then, you know, that's one of the things that I would love to hear in a lot of these reports, you know. Okay, I'm not sure why I keep going off and on the mute. But what are some of the things that we learned that didn't go well, that we're fixing and we're adjusting as we're moving forward? You know, there's a lot to learn from the things that didn't go well, as well as the things that did. So, you know, what are some of the learnings that we had from summer school that we were able to take into account, make adjustments, and turn them into positives as we rolled out school in the new year? So those are, I know there are a lot of different thoughts in Wanao, but, you know, please answer the ones that you can. Mahalo.
Board Member Fallon.
Thank you, Chair Payne. First of all, you all did a lot of work this summer at school level and at all levels. And in terms of the scope of the work and kind of the new areas that you focused on during the summer and had to address very quickly, I really, my hats go off to you. On page eight of your presentation, you talk about, and it kind of builds on what Kai Manu was talking about in terms of where do we go from here? And what are the lessons learned? And what worked and didn't work? I was looking at the percentage of the disproportionately served, which is, I think, they said around twenty percent. I don't remember the exact figures. And that was, I think, in the HEI Coalition testimony. So I'm wondering, you know, given the fact that we, the kids are doing distance learning, and there are disruptions at times because of COVID outbreaks, that this year is going to be another year where the department is challenged and the kids are challenged, and their learning, you know, will be impacted. So I'm wondering, as you're thinking about, on page eight, some of the review and the evaluation, if there's any thinking about how we systematize leading up to next summer, a way to begin to identify more students so we can serve more students in summer school? And, you know, is that the role of summer school? And also, you know, breaking it down maybe by some of the categories as you look at the data, the ELL, the SPED, and so forth. And then do some targeted school-level strategies to begin to identify these children early on, rather than waiting until the last quarter. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Fallon. I, Board Member Voss, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. We're having trouble unmuting. Rodney, on some levels, I think summer school was a real success in terms of participation, in terms of coordination. And I also want to thank the department for its weekly reports. You promised that you were going to do it, and you did that. I appreciate when that happens. A question, though, echoes some of the other concerns. And it's on your last page that Board Member Fallon was just talking about, the impact of summer learning for students in various subgroups, students with high needs in various ethnicities. I mean, that's the key question that we really want to know now, because that's why we did this whole effort. Those students that were falling behind, were falling behind in proficiency. And I'm sure you've looked at the data. And all these reports that you're going to be doing are great, and they're very useful, as other board members have said. But I want to know, based on your preliminary view of the data, did summer school work? Did it have this kind of significant impact that we wanted when we passed the resolution? Is that so?
Okay, either Rodney or Superintendent.
So I would like to try to capture Board Member Bakarsee and Board Member Fallon and Board Member Voss's comments, I think, which are important questions that are an interplay of one another. The big question about how learning loss is recaptured or captured through a summer program and in the transition to the school year is a significant question that takes, I think, some time to capture whether there is loss and whether that has been, that loss has been mitigated. It's a national question that we're trying to pull our arms around. The data will show us that students, you know, we know some very clear outcomes from the data. Students that had the opportunity for blended and in-person time in addition to tech-based time, engaged at a higher level, had greater success and outcomes in meeting the learning goals. The students, obviously, that attended regularly were able to complete credits and have greater success. We captured more students in that learning environment. And so there's this cumulative impact in that experience in keeping students engaged. Now, for us, the challenge is how to put our arms around quantifying unmitigated learning loss or quantifying the success of mitigating that lost time and ensuring that students continued on a positive trajectory. So the approach was to bring together a dashboard that can start capturing some of this information and looking at the transition from, the information from the summer and the transition into the fall semester in terms of students' continued success or improvement as they go into this graded fall semester and school year. And so there's more analysis certainly we can provide and extrapolations from the data. But the complex question of whether learning loss was completely mitigated for X percentage of students is about looking at not just the summer, but looking at how it translated for those students who participated as compared to students who had the need for summer school, who did not participate or who did not complete. So it will take a little more time to look at that actual impact, although we can do some further early analysis about what is it that we understand about the impact right now within a time-limited within a time limited, a scope of time that's limited in the summer months, where we can appropriately extrapolate in terms of credit completion, goal completion and so forth. So I think it's going to take both looking, defining where those areas are now that we can confidently say with the data analysis and where we need to look at how that data for those students plays out into the school year and how they perform in this first and second quarter and that readiness to come in and be engaged. There are multiple layers, obviously, that impact this in terms of measuring the impact of retaining or re-engagement of students that helped with better preparation to get them into this new school year. And that, that data looks different than looking at immediate outcome data in the summer. So there are some several layers that we may need to define what those layers of analysis are. So again, we don't overstate, but at the same time, we don't overstate the impact, but at the same time, identify the areas where there is a follow-up that is needed based on those learnings. We try to capture some of that through the policy implications in terms of how we look at building in the summer learning even as we go into next summer, knowing that there is an impact on learning this year with disruptions from the COVID crisis. But also looking at the bigger equity questions around where learning occurs and whether the design models, whether this is the opportunity to look at design models differently. And this is where principals and complexes took what they learned in the summer and said, the traditional school classroom may not be the place to maximize engagement and learning for some of our students who are struggling with a variety of matters, whether poverty-related, access-related and so forth. So we try to capture some of the, our thinking about how we're using the learning in those high-level policy implications. And again, we can tease that out further now that we've developed the, you know, we've, we've put the dashboard format in place so that community can also have access to that data. But now teasing out the, what the learnings have been, what the financial, what the financial demand is to put these kinds of equity solutions in place for students who are struggling. And we also try to raise the issue of time and whether we need to look at for most struggling students, other concepts of the school year that are not traditional school year concepts that are more year-round concepts, again, raising the equity and design issues. So certainly, we've, we've been deep in these discussions. If they're, and we would be, I think it's, it's an important matter for the board to continue to engage in your questions that you have of us around how we're using the data and ultimately how we will be able to capture the true learning impact of COVID over the course of this time period, where we're having to deliver teaching and learning very differently and in very interrupted manners, where we need to keep shifting our approach. And that, that's, I think that's the complexity that was, that's difficult to capture in the, in the, in the data. But we want to make sure that we're using that data and showing how we're using that data for decision-making and even policy approaches that the board may want to think about relative to equity.
Thank you Superintendent. Board Member Voss, did you have any follow-up on that or are you okay? Yeah, I see.
I'm sorry Chair, I apologize. I do, I guess my question is when? And I understand it's complex and I understand these are, it's difficult to measure. But when are we going to get a sense of, to answer my question, whether this worked or not?
Board Member Voss, we can certainly provide another layer of analysis on the data for the next board meeting and provide it in board, a board report format. And I will gladly, again, get input from the board members around the questions we feel can be answered by the data and, and the questions that are really going to need further analysis and looking at how our students who came to summer school perform in quarter one and quarter two. I do think it's a layering on of the analysis that we're going to have to do over time.
Okay, thank you Superintendent. I see Board Member Bakarsee, your hand is up and so is Board Member Fallon. So Board Member Bakarsee first.
I apologize, I didn't take it down previously.
Okay, Board Member Fallon.
Chair Payne, it's just a follow-up question and maybe more of a comment. Along the lines of what would be of interest for me, at least for the next board meeting, would be a kind of, as a start, what the approach is going to be to begin to plan for next summer? And what, what some of the data points you will be looking at to make that determination about next summer? And how that might be systematically applied at the school level? So I'm not actually expecting a plan per se, but kind of how you're going to get there.
Board Member Fallon, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you finished.
Well, just want, just to add, because I, I think that at least for the tri-level, at the state level, that, that might be helpful as the schools and the complex begins to engage in, you know, moving in that direction in a systematic way. Thank you.
Thank you Board Member Fallon for that question. One of the first decisions we will have to make is what worked best in summer school that was centralized or, you know, statewide that we would want to continue. We have not taken a statewide approach on summer learning and so that's part of the decision-making. The other level that we will be impacted on, impacted by is the finances around this. We do not have necessarily a funding structure for this. And, and we'll be going into a very difficult next legislative session with some key areas where we've already taken tremendous hits on financially. A hundred million already cut from our budget that's going to, that's part of the permanent budget moving forward and other proposed cuts being presented. And so the fixed budget that we're working under this year does, does not necessarily provide the additional funds that schools or the state would need for a comprehensive summer program. We had the benefit of federal dollars. So that's one layer. The other layer is we have a significant equity issue where we need support with a state solution around connectivity and device purchases. There's a shortage of devices nationally and we're all on hold waiting for devices. The issue of connectivity, we can, we can provide the best we can and we have with the purchase of over 11,000 MiFi hubs. But is it the DOE's fully honor to pay for connectivity for families who are relying on this for other services as well, not just education? There are these broad equity matters that I think we need to continue to engage with other state agencies and legislators around that this summer learning design also assumes. It assumes that, that kids have the devices, have the connectivity and so forth. So this is, this crisis has raised tremendous issues around equity. And, you know, I welcome the continued dialogue with the board around not only design and what we hope and want to and project to put in place, but how do we create the financial structure to be able to deliver on this? And how do we mitigate the equity challenges that lie beyond the DOE? The outreach has been tremendous across the board on trying to mitigate those equity challenges. But, but within DOE financial structure, we're not going to be able to provide that solution. And that's, you know, that's my big push and my big worry as the state superintendent is those equity policy matters that we are faced with right now. So, so I know you asked about the summer design, but the summer design as one of its core learnings has raised to the forefront this equity challenge and financial challenge that we are pressured with right now to try to develop the partnerships with legislature to find a solution and congressional leaders that we've been continuously meeting with and have themselves stated that Hawaii needs a connectivity plan and a plan to meet this challenge, which not only impacts, again, education, but it impacts healthcare access, service access and so forth for families in need.
Thank you Superintendent. Are there any other board members that have any comments or questions concerning this discussion item? Okay, seeing none, I did hear that we're going to get some additional information shared with us as requested and we'll get more details on that probably to you in writing if you need them Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Lu. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item B, which is an update on the metrics to monitor and evaluate the department's comprehensive plan for reopening schools for the 2020-21 school year, including student access to devices and connectivity, personal protective equipment, sanitation supplies, student attendance and student academic status and progress. Again, I will call on Superintendent Kishimoto to present on this agenda item.
Thank you Board Chair, appreciated. I would like to do a quick overview of this and see, get some feedback from the board members. Board Member TeKano had raised this at the last board meeting as well. We, the Board of Education had unanimously approved the 12 vital sign metrics to monitor and evaluate the department's plan for school reopening on July 23rd as conditions quickly changed and adjustments were made to our reopening plan to not only have additional days for training and delaying school reopening for students, but then layering on the decision to learn from home primarily as we went into this first four weeks and then extended into the first quarter. The, again, the conditions for looking at the data raise questions for us as well about, you know, making sure that the 12 vital sign metrics are appropriately articulated. And so we have provided in attachment B, a, an outline of the original board adopted metrics and provide some comments that we would like to make in adjusting some of those metrics. What's really important to emphasize also for the public is that the board had asked us to develop metrics around these four components. There are the board priorities around health and safety, vulnerable students, in-person instruction, access to connectivity and devices. And so we are not, so it still remains within that framework. What you'll see is that the, the goals also remain the same. It's, the metrics are meant to inform board decision-making and provide clarity, clear communications on the four BOE priorities and allows the DOE to take action based on data that we are seeing. The health and safety standards you'll see on attachment B, two, or I should say that the two metrics that were listed there are, have some, some minor adjustments to, but some important adjustments in terms of making sure that we are showing the percentage by row group that have the appropriate PPE, sanitation supplies, equipment and so forth. And we would continue to report, or we, our plan is to continue to keep in the metrics the reporting on the designs that schools are offering. Again, the school year as it rolls out will certainly impact whether these school design offerings are, are, are by, by, by choice in that there will be greater opportunity to roll out various models or whether by necessity, meaning that the, now with the DOH metrics that we've got in applying those and overlaying those in providing the context for the percentage of schools that are able to move between designs. The vulnerable students, again, we want to, there's no change in the first two metrics. We want to provide the information on progress that students are making as they move through each quarter of the school year and especially in the, and in their secondary grades start to earn credits. We did provide some clarification that we felt was needed around vulnerable students. We have a definition of vulnerable students, but we also know that that definition is expanded in the context of the COVID crisis as well as, as students experience different risks to their ability to attend or engage and tracking our students in terms of, of those vulnerabilities. In-person instruction is the other important measure here. The daily attendance, what we have proposed here is removing by school model. Again, the school models, again, will be reflective of the health conditions in community and, and still, but still reporting a percent of average attendance. The percent of students enrolled at a school who choose to remain at home, we will continue, we continue to present that as a metric that we, we don't have any recommended changes. That does provide information for us on family-based choices, also in response to the health situation. Then finally, access to connectivity, device, connectivity and devices. We are recommending removing the percent of schools to change to count of employees by row group that have completed professional development training to support distance learning. Again, that's a, a, a training approach that we added even after these metrics were presented and adopted by the board, so appropriately making that shift. The percent of students with devices at home, we added indicating to change to percent of students indicating they have devices at home to engage in remote learning. Again, we will continue to check with families and survey them on their availability of devices at home. devices at home. Families who reported having devices after school started and started engaging in distance learning may have found that the devices they have were not sufficient or appropriate to the conditions at home in terms of having multiple students or multiple individuals needing to share a device or not having a device with a camera and so forth. And so we continue to learn more about whether they, not only whether they have a device, but whether it's the appropriate device for learning. The vulnerable students with internet connectivity at home, again, we made a small change of that to percent of students indicating they have connectivity at home to engage in remote learning. As we roll out more MiFi hubs, we are actually the provider of that connectivity for many of our high-need students as we learn that the connectivity they have is not sufficient or just as a family is learning more about connectivity needs, some of them are switching from "I have connectivity" to "I need help with connectivity." And so, again, one of the questions about kind of meeting these gaps between where families are with connectivity and trying to ensure that 100% of our families can be connected is by the, based on the condition of the situational context of the family is, can be a moving target, meaning a family that has housing insecurity, that starts with connectivity, availability, homelessness, any signs of reporting shifts for some of them, just like some of them that didn't have connectivity, have improved situations or more stable situations and have connectivity, or a family who's now lost jobs and are making decisions about bills that they're paying and making decisions that this is something they cannot afford. Their situations are changing. So as we look at where we could provide gap analysis and gap metrics, we also know we have some situational conditions that we have to account for in this data. And then finally, the percent of schools whose vulnerable students are adequately equipped to support distance learning, we have no change recommended there. So the recommended changes are based on some of the conversations we've had in the last few weeks, including at the last board meeting, and also takes the 14, I'm sorry, the 12 original vital sign metrics and makes adjustments to those as we've been laying out the operationalization of definitions for each of these metrics and how they will show up on the dashboard.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Are there board members who would like to comment or ask questions about these metrics? Board Member Uimora?
Thank you, Chair Payne. I just wanted to comment on the, well, basically try to get clarification, and I think Superintendent did a good job of doing that. But at the July 23rd board meeting, we approved the metrics, and what I'm understanding is you made some changes to that, hopefully to improve that. But I think for the board, for us to understand the numbers and to make it more meaningful for us, I think that, and I'm assuming that you're looking for comments on the board for possible changes to the matrix, not in terms of actually changing it, but how to interpret the matrix. So what I'm proposing or recommending is that all of the matrix that you have presented to us should indicate the percentage in a number. So if you indicate 80% or 50%, and that's the result, then you should indicate what number that represents. And where I'm going with that is, and you talked about gap, and I agree with that. So what I'm saying is that select matrix should focus on the gap between what we have versus what we don't have when analyzing and determining next step to close the gap. And I know Board Member Bakasi talked about that in the last topic about looking at the gap to see where some of the shortfalls are, maybe it's in rural areas, maybe it's other places. And that's what the gap analysis does, is for us to look at the gap percentage and then do a deeper dive as to how we are going to correct that, how we're going to address that going forward. So what I'm saying is that the gap, the vital matrix is to provide information to the stakeholders, which is part of, is the board, and the matrix should focus on how we address the gap and not solely on what we have realized so far. So when I looked at all the matrix, I could see where, you know, connectivity and devices are fine, matrix, they benefit from a gap analysis, and health and safety metric would be one. So yes, not all matrix would benefit from gap. So we have to select, and I think Superintendent, you mentioned that we are looking at that already, so that's good. On the other one, the department is adding a contextual metric report addendum, and I assume that you're looking, you have a discussion on that. So what I would say to that is that, you know, you should expand that to the matrix to include the purpose and the intended outcome for each metric that you're proposing. And if you look at the personnel metric, I think it should include, should be expanded to include telework, the number of schools and corresponding teachers at telework and teacher vacancies. How would this, how would this metric be used? And how are you going to break that down? Are you going to break that down based on teachers leaving because of COVID-19? Or is it broken down between they're leaving because they're just retiring? I'm not sure how that particular metric is going to be used. So that's my comments. And so Chair, I can yield the floor, so you can take other comments, and then maybe the Superintendent can adjust it at one time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Uimora. Are there other comments before we ask the Superintendent to respond to Board Member Tekeno? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Board Chair. Board Member Tekeno, you know, I thanked the Superintendent from at least considering the request to move towards more of a gap measurement. You know, but I really expected that, based on all the presentations that we were being, well, not the, based on all the testimony that we were being provided, I thought or expected that maybe the department would think about expanding the metrics at least as well as, you know, providing the more, I guess, vital signs based off all the, I guess, comments that we were receiving, and we're trying to see whether or not we could have some sort of formal way of validating them. But, you know, what I see today, it just tweaked what we already had. Again, I was expecting a little bit more metrics to be proposed to address the concerns of all the testifiers that have been testifying at the previous board meetings. But even with the approved metrics, I think as we're moving towards the possibility of doing in-person school, I mean, if you look at this health and safety priority, I really, I'm confused as why are we just talking about the percent of schools that are adequately equipped with PPEs? If they're not even equipped, they shouldn't even open. So, and adequately, I'm concerned as to what does that mean? I would think that there are guidelines and there are recommendations, and I think to fulfill that, it should not be adequately, but at least properly equipped. And the goal is three months from today's press conference, so I would say that we should understand the schools that are properly equipped with three months of the required PPE sanitation and so forth. So I think the metrics got to be more pinpointed and more targeted to what we're really trying to accomplish. When we talk about the percentage of schools offering this face-to-face, in-person, blended, hybrid, exception, I don't know what we would, I guess, be looking at by getting that as a percent. I mean, what are we trying to ascertain? Will it be by complex? Will we understand by island? I don't know how it would look, so I'm kind of, would be waiting for that. And just the things about these access to connectivity and devices. So there's one thing where you get to understand whether or not they indicate that they have devices, but on top of that, I think you also make sure that they have access to connectivity, right? So it should be changed to not only do they have device, the devices, but they also have access to connectivity. For the vulnerable ones, not only do they have connectivity, but they have an access to a device. So I think those were hand-in-hand because you could have connectivity and the device, and you're out of luck and vice versa. So I just really feel that these metrics need to be really tweaked. If we're not going to get gap measurements, I think we're going to have to, again, get more granular into the information that we're really trying to understand. And I can go on and on, but, you know, this is just what I'm seeing right now, that I think it should be taken back and then kind of recategorized in more specific metrics. So we, as the board, we can kind of derive some assumptions and some recommendations based on the information that's being presented. Again, I don't want to go on and on, so I'm going to just yield the floor now. Thank you.
Board Member Tekeno, before you yield the floor, I just want to be clear on, are you suggesting that we perhaps include more of the health and safety metrics that came out during the press conference today? We've been waiting for quite a while for the information from the Department of Health, and we finally have it. But would you like to see some of those metrics included in the reports that are given to us about individual schools? Because we have, you mentioned the testimony, and we have had a lot of testimony speaking to an uneven quality of some of those concerns.
You know, I guess my focus was, was that over the past several meetings, we had so much employees coming to testify at the board, expressing concerns, and, you know, providing us stories upon which were concerning, but there was no way to validate them. I thought through this process, we could use this vehicle to expand on the concerns that they were bringing forth, and so we could, the department could propose metrics to examine those issues and so that we would have at least a mechanism to understand that those concerns that are being raised were being addressed. And so the only part that I took from today's press conference, and I got in a little late, but I do know that the goal of the department is to have each school properly equipped with three-month supply. So I think that's the target, so I think that should be the metric. But it's not saying that in the revised metric. So again, just getting it more detailed, more concrete, so we understand what the total goal is, what's the objective. Now, of course, getting to that perfection may not be obtainable, but, you know, I think if we're striving for that, we can do a lot better in a sense of understanding what we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, again, I would just, would like to see more metrics and more, you know, desired outcomes being listed in here that was taken from all the previous testimonies we received and concerns that were raised, and then have it more, I guess, robust in a sense. I hope it clarifies my comments, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Tekeno. Board Member Fallon?
Thank you, Chair Payne. I, I think specificity is good in the health and safety area, and any way that we can kind of set a target, whether it's three-month supply, I think is really good because then at least we have a goal, you know, and then we can see how we are from that goal, and that's a form of gap, right? So 10 schools out of 30 have a three-month supply, but we know that 20 do not. So I would advocate for that. I've been focusing on the issue of in-person instruction area and attendance. And so perhaps if I understood a little bit more about the role of the state staff in the attendance area, it would be helpful. So first of all, who defines attendance and what definition are you using? That's one question. Second question, since you're going to be summarizing, what, when you talk about average daily attendance per month and you apply the definition, what, by school model, do you, I'm assuming that you capture data that would tell you what school is, has the worst attendance and what school has the best attendance? That must be captured somewhere in order for you to get to some kind of average because you're collecting the data. So that's the other part of my question. How do you, how do you capture the data and in what form is it organized so that you can review and analyze it? And at the state level, where in the organization does that occur? Thank you.
Whether it's appropriate to answer that, Superintendent or one of your ASs?
Yes, so I can have AS Armstrong talk about the, how attendance is being done, but I think capturing both Board Member Fallon's and Board Member Tekeno's comments, what we can provide to the board are the business rules that lie behind each metric that defines how that data is going to be calculated and how it's going to be measured. And so those business rules, there are business rules behind each metric. And so that can be provided to the board so that you can see how calculations are done for each of these measures, which I think will be, that will answer a lot of the questions and comments being made. Because in the last board meeting, and maybe it was the one before that, we had discussed the three-month supply standard. So we have those standards. That's part of the business rules that lie behind how we would be calculating this. And the importance of, that was the reporting by principals, for example, on a spreadsheet that we've had to put in place for them to capture their PPE needs, whether those supplies are being maintained. That's all been stood up, so that's part of previous conversations we've had. Again, we can capture that by providing you the business rules behind each behind each of these metrics, which would also include the business rules around attendance, which is gonna be, and is a challenge in terms of how we are capturing attendance as we go in and out of these various design models. But I can, if you like, I can have Assistant Superintendent Armstrong give some overview of the attendance metric or the, I'm sorry, the attendance-taking process. And then we will capture the metric in the business rules document that I can do as a follow-up. Is that what you would like to do now, Board Member Fallon?
Um, you know, I-
Or hear it in the, or get it in the business rules?
Well, I don't wanna take up undue amount of the board's time. I'm open to maybe follow-up of some kind with your staff so that I don't keep coming back to it. The reason why I'm focusing on this is when you start to look at metrics about how students are doing, this is one of not very many that are on this vital signs. And so it's important. And so when you start to look at average daily attendance, even by school model, it doesn't really tell you how, you know, what schools, what either school's struggling and what schools are doing well. It just is one figure. And it also doesn't tell you, okay, so if, is there a range? So if a school, you know, kind of like Amber Alert, if a school is within this range, there's follow-up done and who does it? And I think it begins to go back to kind of just clarity about what is the state's role? And then what is the CAS's role? And what is the school's role in kind of systematically looking at attendance? Especially as you begin to identify students who may not be participating and attending as much as they should. So it starts with the definition and then it goes to kind of the systematic follow-up. And what data helps us determine how the kids are doing? So a follow-up meeting would be fine, whatever is most conducive to the time.
Board Member Fallon, I just absolutely, I just wanna emphasize that the attendance is an absolutely key metric that we should, we are tracking and looking at. And we are able to look at attendance compared to point in time last year. We also are able to pull down by student their own attendance history. So it does act as a red alert system for us to say that X number of days into the school year, we have the same students or different students or different alert, different situations that we are alerted to based on attendance alone. We know if students are not in instruction engaged, that they fall behind very quickly, especially in this environment. It's already a hyper-stressed environment around quality engagement that's challenging in this environment. So yes, attendance is absolutely key. Again, we can provide the business rules around this, but we can also have sit-down time with you or any other board member that wants to understand how we're doing attendance, but also how we need to continue to keep an eye on how attendance is being accurately taken. When there are alerts, is the alert around the accuracy of the data? Or is it around the student? Or is it a student alert? Is it a system alert? Those are all really important at this point in time as we go through this school year.
Thank you. I will maybe follow-up then.
Okay, thank you. I see Board Member Margaret Cox followed by Student Representative Hunter.
Thank you, Chair. Maggie Cox, Kauai. I come from a slightly different point of view on some of these things. I would, when, as we're moving into more face-to-face, and what I thought I understood today was all schools are gonna open as they were now with distance learning to give the complexes time to move into their hybrid models or so forth. So to me, when I read data on how things are going, I would rather have it by complex. If you tell me, you know, 90% of the state is blah, 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 that doesn't help me a whole lot to understand where we might be able to get some more help. Another thing I don't know about is how many 4140s we're doing because I keep hearing things about a lot of parents are just dropping their kids out of school. I don't know how that's affecting everything. And for distance learning, well, back to the safety issue. I asked our Complex Area Superintendent. He said that the PPEs and the sanitizing equipment, well, not equipment, but the sanitizing areas are coming in. So the schools are starting to get those kinds of things. So that made me feel better. So the supply needs are starting to roll in. Then when I asked about computers, he said, no, they're not. They've gotten a lot of Wi-Fi, but I contacted one of the middle schools and they have about 70 kids a day that come in for the hub. So that's telling me that a lot of kids, and I don't know what schools, I don't know where it is, but I don't know, overall, by complex, where there's really massive problem in kids being, having that connectivity. Because I'm sure there's some places that it's so much better than others. And then when you get to attendance, we have this one student that testified today that said, that is Wi-Fi goes out and then he's counted as absent and he can't get logged back in. And that was a high school student. So I know that we have, we're doing, the department is doing everything that they can to get it where we need to go. It's just as we're moving forward to the next board meeting and the next, there are some of these areas that I feel like we really need to know, not just the statewide data, that we need it by complex. Because that way it pinpoints where we need to address more and where the department needs to address more. And so for, and maybe no one else feels this way, but for me, I would rather have it by complex. Yes, you're gonna give us the state numbers, but I would like to know how complexes are doing. So because slowly, they're supposed to be moving. If they're, for example, Kauai, who keeps having known cases, I'm assuming we're gonna be moving, at least by the second semester, moving into more face-to-face instruction, probably before then. I don't know. But if I don't have any kind of numbers, I don't know how many kids. For example, I have no idea how many kids on Kauai don't have connectivity. If one middle school has to have 70 kids come in for their hub, then that could be a real problem. And I'm thinking Kauai is doing okay. So if I'm feeling that way, then what about all these other complexes? And how are they gonna make these decisions? And so we don't know how, what the decisions are going to be and how they're gonna be starting. So I don't really want to have every single meeting we have 500 to 600 printed testimonies. And then I sit for three hours listening to people say almost the very same thing over and over and over. So I just need to know some of the, a little bit more specific data so I feel like we're moving in the right direction. And Superintendent, I'm always backing you up. I think that you're doing the best that you can and I'm really for you. But I just need a little bit more information as we move along. So thank you.
Okay, Hunter?
Cox, oh, I was just-
Oh, go ahead. Superintendent?
Yes, we will, we will provide the data by complex area. And so that, all of these metrics can, are state-level and complex-area data. I just wanted to make sure I answered that part right away. Thank you.
Student Representative Hunter, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to address kind of where the students are coming from. So the Hoisei City Council had a meeting on August 29th. And since then, I've had the opportunity to meet with representatives from across the state, ranging from Hilo all the way back to Honolulu, of course. So I was able to get different opinions about how they've been dealing with distance learning and what their experiences have been. So like, for instance, in Hilo, I've gotten a lot of positive remarks about distance learning because their schools are on the smaller side. So it's a lot easier for them to kind of get connected with their teachers because the community is a little smaller. Whereas here in Honolulu, we have schools that range from 2,000 to 3,000 where it's hard for everyone to get connected. I will say that the majority of students that I did talk to, though, expressed that they find it hard to transition into distance learning. So it's definitely been a new experience for them and it's still difficult for them to kind of get with the program because, you know, we went from, and especially coming from like a high school level, we went from getting ready for school in the morning to just kind of getting out of our beds and going into class, like without taking a shower, getting ready. So it's different work environments. And I think that it is definitely important to kind of address these issues among our students. And like Board Member Cox said, going back to connectivity and finding out where we are lacking in those areas and how to contribute to that. So I yield the floor.
Thank you, Student Representative. Okay, I'm looking for any other hands. I just wanna say also that I think we haven't had, fully had time to digest the additional metrics that were shared today with the Department of Health and from the Department of Health. And there certainly was a lot of testimony that I don't think we can gloss over about telework and health concerns that teachers are experiencing. And I'm not sure what kind of metric that would fall into, but I do think that we need to really consider the concerns that our labor force has and the issues of the PPE that continues to come up, the issues of the sanitation in the schools. And I don't think we begin to have enough custodians to do the kind of cleaning that needs to be done, so that also falls on teachers. And, you know, these are kinds of things that, they're not as easily captured, but they certainly are impacting our ability to deliver the kind of quality experience for our students that we're trying to do. So I see another hand has come up, and Keely, go right ahead, Board Member Namau.
Aloha. Mahalo, Board Chair. This is Board Member Keely Namau. I wanna thank Maggie Cox for bringing up the idea of the complexes. But I think that the three of us, Kamana Bakarci, myself and Maggie, you know, we're coming from the neighbor islands. We certainly have different situations that we're dealing with in our different specific counties. It's not as a crisis level as it is on Oahu. And so I would very much am interested in the breakdowns and through the complexes because it gives us a better idea of really what's happening. I think we do have a pretty good idea of what's happening on our islands, but that would be very helpful. In regards to what you had just mentioned, Chair Payne, I am very interested in how a lot of this is impacting our staff. So I don't know if there's somehow that we can get some metrics on what's happening with staff in terms of the percentages of staff that are teleworking, perhaps those that are requesting teleworking and they're not-
We lost you, Keely. Can you hear, if you can hear me, can you start again on the teleworking question? We've lost Keely, I think. Okay. I'm gonna ask, oh, okay, Keely, you wanna start again? I saw you unmute.
Can you hear me?
Now I can, yes.
Okay, I don't know what happened. It didn't move, okay. In terms of the teleworking, and I don't, I would like to see the kinds of metrics that are involved with teleworking. How many people are requesting teleworking? How many are receiving the opportunities to telework from home? I'm a little concerned about people getting very frustrated over this. And I don't wanna lose staff. I don't wanna lose highly qualified teachers over this situation. And I think we have to have a better idea of how this is impacting our staff and the teachers. I'm a little worried about that. I'm hearing so much testimony. I'm hearing on-the-ground situations of what's going on with that. And I don't know if there's somehow that we can get that kind of metrics developed so that we have a better idea of what's happening with our staff. I'm concerned about those who are perhaps, they're gonna retire because they're just, they're done, and I get it. But I don't know if there's ways that we can figure out how we can help them, how we can sustain them, how we can support them. If they are gonna retire, you know, are there exit interviews that are being taken? I wanna have a better understanding of the frustrations that are out there and to know that our teachers are trying to be supportive, that we are supportive of them. And it's not just the teachers. I'm hearing from administrators, too. You know, the teachers have had kind of the summer off, but administrators have not. They've been at it since March, since the end of March, and they've been coming in daily. And it just kind of breaks my heart listening to them as well. They're really working hard. How can we support them? And so, you know, there's a lot of you that follow data and things like that. I listen to stories, you know? I understand there's data, but I'm also listening to the stories. And I don't know how we capture some of that. I know that there's that quantitative data, but there's that qualitative data, too, people's stories. So how can we capture some of this? And what are we gonna do about it once we get it? How can we support our staff? How can we support our teachers? How can we support our administrators? Mahalo.
Thank you, Keely. Any response from any of our ASs or our superintendent to anything you've heard so far in the last couple of testifiers?
Thank you, Board Member Namau, for your comment, which speaks to a topic that we have certainly continued to talk about as a tri-level leadership team, which is that culture of care that is extremely important all the time in the field of education, but especially now. The question about telework, we would have to look at how we capture that data again. That is, that is a tool, an HR-related tool that's available to school principals. And it's not necessarily reported up in terms of the in and out of telework. But we do, and we apply telework in multiple fashions. Some of it is short-term and driven by an immediate safety consideration and whole teams going out on telework as testing is done and areas might be shut down, all the way to a longer-term telework format or process. And then we have employees who want to work in more isolated classrooms, so they have access to all of their tools and resources and have a safe space on campus and have consistent connectivity. And so our goal is not necessary to keep increasing telework. It's to use that tool well. And so I don't know that I would put it as a metric. I would prefer to look at how I can report point-in-time status of how telework is being utilized and how, you know, what that engagement with that policy is across the state. So that's more of a report format than a metric. And so we can certainly think about how we capture that data- And so we can certainly think about how we capture that data and, and loop back with the board on, on the questions that have been raised around how the telework policy is impacting our capacity for in-person versus blended versus distance learning approaches that we're using.
Thank you, superintendent. Are there any other comments on the metrics? Okay, still checking, seeing none. I think there are some additional things that we're very interested in, superintendent, so we can follow up on making sure that we get that information the next time that we meet. We're now at our last and perhaps most controversial item on our agenda, which is the presentation on the Acelis Learning Accelerator Distance Learning Program. It includes a program review process, how Acelis is used by the schools, what elementary and secondary students use Acelis, the content and rigor issues, parent and guardian distance learning, the choice that parent and guardians made for this distance learning, and whatever the supports for students and teachers and administrators and parents and guardians are. We had a lot of testimony on this over the last three meetings, I think. We have had a response to a Board of Education IOU in response to some specific questions about the program. Some of that was incorporated into the report that we were given, and we had some additional testimony today. So I know board members do have questions about this, but we'll go first to Deputy Unabasami, who will present the report of the Acelis Learning Accelerated Program.
So aloha, board chair Payne, vice chair Uwe Mora, and board members. I'm mahalo for the opportunity to listen and join in the discussion. Item on Acelis. The memo for this discussion provides the preliminary information requested. However, I also want to share, as I believe the issues surrounding Acelis has to be viewed in context. The department and the school communities have been planning in the hopes of reopening school facilities to all students since March, moving the reopening dates multiple times and adjusting how long our reliance on off-the-shelf programs would last. Any program utilized was meant to be a temporary fix to help schools manage the unique challenges that they were facing. Some had more capacity than others because of, for example, existing educator capacity and confidence in utilizing the technology as a major venue for interacting with their students, students' ability and exposure to technology, not only in the home but at school. And then you're very well aware of the broadband availability regardless of socioeconomic status. As we move forward, per Dr. Kishimoto's request, I've inserted myself into the process, setting direction, starting with setting direction for finding leads who I believe have expertise, experience, and hopefully instruction, institutional knowledge for curriculum and instructional materials management for the department. I started those meetings with those involved in curricular development and in selection of instructional materials and look forward to, to today's board discussion to help develop further focus of this work as we move ahead. For Acelis specifically, I know that it is very important that we are, that there is high interest in, in clarity and recommendations as soon as possible as we continue to use virtual learning as a way to support student learning. And so I just yield the floor to you, back to you, Chair, and, and ready to listen and hopefully answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Phyllis. Do we have any questions from board members on the Acelis Learning Program, following up on testimony or questions yourself? I saw board member Voss, and then I see our military representative, Captain Yatka. So first, board member Voss.
Thanks, Chair. This is Bruce Voss. Phyllis, I, I agree with your comment that you need to look at the selection of Acelis in context. It was a difficult time, it's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of confusion. But I also think it's important to acknowledge that this was just a mistake. It was a bad choice. And I'm not so much interested in that because mistakes are going to be made in type of circumstance that we had there. I understand that. But what I'd like to know is the process. What was the process that was used to select Acelis over other alternatives? And what have, what has the department learned from that process to ensure that we don't make the same mistake next time?
Aloha. So, thank you. So with the process, I think with the, the quick turnaround and fast decisions that were being made, I do believe that the process was offering and suggesting programs that might be easily picked up by, by schools who were looking for a solution to help their families. And so please understand that the intent of the people who are involved in this was, was meaningful and, and, and meant to help. As we move forward, and, and in the previous conversation, I don't remember which one it was, today, board member Bakarci said, oh, I know, it was the metrics. He said, what are the three insights or learnings that we can take away from our experiences? And I started thinking about, you know, what are the three insights and learnings that we can? And I, I don't have three, but I have some, and I just want to share. And I think one is that whenever we're making any suggestions for curriculum and instructional materials, it should come with written recommendations for usage. The capacity to, it should come with the capacity to preview the product prior to purchase to make an informed decision, whether it's parents or the, the schools, and that there's supplemental, supplemental activities and materials that would strengthen the learning process for students and the teaching practice for a teacher. When we, when I look at Acelis, and, and please know, I just started working on this, so the, the, the comments I'm making are really in response to, they're formative, not necessarily solidified recommendations. But I do have meetings set up. I've already formed a multidisciplinary team to do a comprehensive review that includes our equity specialists. And I know that the Board of Education is very familiar with the work of our equity specialists. And I've asked some of them too, who, who have background in education, to help us build a lens for their department that includes looking at the, the lens, a lens of social justice, making sure that we are looking at biases and using their expertise to help us to navigate where those issues might either be very apparent and may have some hidden invisible implications that we might not be able to pick up without their expertise. We also are working with a content area specialist who were part of the first re, the first review, and asking them to help us build out a comprehensive review and what it will look like. Some of the values that I think we should expect, knowing that, having sat through the last three years, listening to the Board of Education, is the set of values that include high-quality content that lends for social justice. Is it relevant? Are we, you know, are we just teaching kids facts or are we asking them to apply learning? And then we also need to think about what are the companion practices that support our students in the learning experiences? You know, knowing that our, our students come from various backgrounds and have different needs, we've got to also think about what kinds of constructive, what kinds of feedback is going to be constructive for them and supportive of their continued growth. So those are just some of the recommendations. Moving forward, we've also talked, talked, just in my mind, and talking with some of the specialists, is going back to the context in which schools were dealing with the challenges. I, I, I think, I believe that we need to recommend how we're going to help schools to offer different types of programs that can meet their student needs. And I just want you to know that tomorrow I start more in-depth conversations with the leads for this work to move forward, knowing that everybody is interested in that clarity and the recommendations as soon as possible.
So, so Phyllis.
I hope I answered your question.
Well, sort of. But again, I, I'm more focused on making sure this, what I'm calling a mistake, doesn't get repeated again. So the types of steps you're talking about, looking at the tiers beforehand, looking through different lenses, making sure they fulfill certain factors. I mean, ideally, that should be done all before a program, like this is selected, not after. So is the department going to be putting together some procedures, guidelines, whatever you want to call them, to make sure that those steps, those reviews are done before such a program is selected in the future?
Yes. Thank you. And, and the answer is yes. We've already developed several delivery, deliverables. One of them is an approved curriculum and instructional materials inventory of current policies and the recommended changes that are needed. And that's the first one, is that we need to have a clear set of policies that reflect the tri-level governance, the responsibilities, decision-making, and accountability over curriculum, instructional materials, and align, and that there's an alignment to standards, equity, and, and the assessments that we're using. Because as we know that schools are making choices, complex areas are making choices, and state level has responsibilities also, we've got to be very clear about what that tri-level governance looks like. The other deliverable that I've articulated, and I, I want you to know, like, this needs to be wordsmithed, but I did throw it out to, to the team to consider, is we want to have an approved curriculum management process that is documented and utilized to implement the tri-level governance for transformative change and assurances of quality. And what we talked about very briefly the other day was this idea of curriculum selection and adoption might take typically a year. Well, what does it mean to fast-track?